All right, today is May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, our city council work session. Uh, call in to order here. And there's a note to the public, uh, that anything on this agenda, uh, city council may vote to go into executive session to, to, uh, receive legal advice for. Um, council member Aslan, would you, uh, lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Certainly, my pleasure. Everybody, please stand as you're able. And join along if you wish. Join along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. Invisible.
Thank you, council member. Uh, councilman McCarthy, would you, uh, mind reading the mission statement for us?
It'd be my pleasure. The mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you much. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
All right, we got the whole crew here. Uh, gen item four is public participation. I understand we have two public commentators if, uh, like to patch them in.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. My name is Jessica Drum. I'm your public affairs director and I'm your first public commenter. Today I am, uh, utilizing public comment to introduce you to our new management analyst, Chris Rhodey. Um, Chris, if you'd like to turn your video on so folks can see you, that would be great. Um, Chris has joined the public affairs team. He will be taking over Jack Fitchett's previous work program, which will include the Office of Labor Standards, Priority Based Budgeting, the city manager's budget off, uh, city manager's office budget, as well as other special projects as requested by the mayor and council. So we are really excited to have this position filled full time again. Many thanks to Jack Fitchett, who continued to fill it even as he joined the Economic Vitality Team, and we look forward to welcoming Chris and working with him here in the future. I know I'm not seeing him either. Um. I'll have him take us. I'm not sure if he's having an issue with his video, so we'll take a, a video, a picture and put it in the chat. So welcome, Chris, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Drum. Uh, next, uh, public participant.
Mayor, we have Anthony Garcia. Anthony, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Thank you, Mayor Deasy, with Mayor Daggett, council management and staff. My name is Anthony Garcia. And I would like to take this opportunity to invite the entire community out to an event that is taking place on Saturday, this Saturday, May twenty eighth at ten AM. They're at the City Hall, in the City Hall parking lot, and it's a bike strike for, um, climate change. So it gives everyone an opportunity to, um, to protest, to learn more about, uh, the diverse climate that we are living in now, uh, together as a group, and give everyone an opportunity to get out and express themselves on their bikes. Private cars cause gridlock, air pollution are responsible for large, uh, sins of CO2 emissions are dangerous to pedestrians and children, they take up space that could otherwise be used to play or return to nature. We thank the city of Flagstaff for declaring a climate emergency, and we must, uh, now take action upon ourselves. By striking on our bikes, we demonstrate that we are ready to move to low carbon travel. So please join us with your bike, and we invite you and all of your friends and family and colleagues to participate in the bike strike this Saturday, May twenty ninth, ten AM, City Hall parking lot. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, letting the public know. I think that, uh, we, we just had those two public participants. Some, uh, correct, Ms. Salzberg?
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, just wanted to make sure here. Uh, we're down to agenda item number five, review of draft agenda for the June first, two thousand and twenty one city council meeting. Uh, council, do you have anything you'd like to bring up regarding the agenda next week? Uh, councilmember Solis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the item on the budget, uh, the, the tentative approval of the budget, I would ask staff to provide information of the breakdown in terms of allocation, um, of funds that are directly related to the implementation of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. I believe we've had those, uh, breakdowns in previous budget presentations in previous years, and I would like to see the same breakdown. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Solis. Uh, city manager, is that workable to do for next week?
I believe it is. Allow, uh, me to consult with, uh, other staff and we'll put together the information requested. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you much. I'm not seeing anything else in the chat box, so that brings us to gen item number six. Uh, oh, my apologies, councilmember McCarthy is coming.
That's all right. Um, I'm, like I asked for on the, uh, climate adaption plan, the carbon plan. Um, it'd be good to get the information out as soon as possible, so we have time to study it. You know, it's great to get it out on Friday afternoon, but if you, if the city manager has any things he can share with us, uh, maybe tomorrow or the next day, uh, that would be helpful to give us a little more time to review it. Thank you.
Certainly. Uh, thank you for bringing that up, councilmember McCarthy. All right, then we are on to our gen item six, our Carbon Neutrality Plan Review and Community Conversation. Um, Ms. Antonopoulos.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. I'm honored to be here to present the draft Flagstaff Carbon Neutrality Plan to you, and I am joined this afternoon by Jenny Niemann, our Climate Specialist, and Ramon Alatorre, our Climate and Energy Coordinator. They are going to assist me with the presentation. And I think we are having a little bit of technical difficulty. We'll see if the next slide advances here. Fantastic. So the agenda for today's presentation includes a brief recap of the Climate Emergency Declaration, and really how we got here today. It will also include an overview of the technical analysis that is the foundation of the Carbon Neutrality Plan. We also provide highlights from our conversations with more than two thousand six hundred community members, which influenced this plan, and then we will take a deeper dive into the actual plan itself. At the end of each agenda item, we will provide a slide titled Clarifications, which aim to answer questions or address misinformation around the Carbon Neutrality Plan. We then follow that clarification slide with an opportunity slide, because climate action is truly about opportunities for our community. Before we jump in, I'd like to take a moment to sincerely thank every community member that participated in the development of this plan. I want to emphasize that this includes all the voices and varying opinions on the plan. This has and will continue to aid us in developing a framework for action that best serves our community and will challenge us to excel. So we'll start off by revisiting our path to carbon neutrality. Our working climate action began in earnest back in two thousand and seven, which most of our work at that time focused on city operations. But we did provide numerous programs to the Flagstaff community centering on reducing energy use, waste minimization, community guarding, less impactful transportation options and such. Following direction from city council, Sustainability hosted the city's first community conversation on a community-wide climate action and adaptation plan in two thousand and seventeen. Following in that year, October of two thousand and eighteen, the International Panel on Climate Change, also known as the IPCC, published a special report on global warming, which compares warming scenarios of two point seven degrees Fahrenheit and three point two degrees Fahrenheit. The images on the right of your screen reflect the, in these impact scenarios. And we've talked to council about this in the past, but please keep in mind that out of the last three years, two of those years have been the hottest years on record. I'd also like to talk, um, to mention that when talking about degrees of warming, we're talking about the increase in the Earth's average temperature. We measured this increase from a baseline average temperature in the mid to late nineteenth century, when the Industrial Revolution swung into high gear and people began burning fossil fuels at an unprecedented level, really jumpstarting climate change. And then in November of two thousand and eighteen, another milestone was the Flagstaff Climate Action and Adaptation Plan was adopted unanimously by city council. At that time, that plat, plan set a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions eighty percent by the year two thousand and fifty. When staff brought that plan forward, we did note that the IPCC report had just come out and needed to be addressed, uh, in the coming years. And then moving forward in September of two thousand and nineteen, there was a global climate strike, and that catalyzed global and local climate action. Locally, more than eighteen hundred community members gathered on the South Lawn of City Hall to show their support for increasing climate action. In February of two thousand and nineteen, Flagstaff joined the Global Covenant of Mayors, solidifying the city organization's commitment to taking climate action. And then, in November of two thousand and nineteen, excuse me, I have those dates out of order, but in November of two thousand and nineteen, the United Nations Gap Report came out and clarified the need for more urgent action. And then in January of two thousand and twenty, hundreds of well-organized community members came to City Hall to make the case for the city council to, to clear a climate emergency. And then in June, Resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero nine was unanimously adopted by the city council. The purpose of the citizen-initiated Climate Emergency Declaration is to accelerate sustained and meaningful climate action by all levels of government and for people to engage with the challenge of avoiding catastrophic climate change and restoring a safe climate. An emergency requires that we come together as a community to address the situation. By mobilizing our efforts, we can better align, be more inclusive, be more innovative, and be more collaborative to solve the problems as a community. The Climate Emergency Declaration identifies eight key actions. And for this afternoon's discussion, we really are focusing on action number seven, which states that the city of Flagstaff will take steps to revise the goals outlined in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan to be in alignment with the United Nations November two thousand and nineteen Emissions Gap Report, while maintaining equal emphasis on adaptation, mitigation, and equity. Please keep in mind, even though we're highlighting number seven today, we are working hard to ensure that we are addressing all key actions throughout the Carbon Neutrality Plan and in our existing work. Council, you may find the points on this slide familiar, but I would be maris, remiss if I did not mention this each time. When we discuss carbon neutrality, it's going to be difficult, but it requires leadership, bold action, and sustained commitment. We will need to incorporate carbon neutrality in all decision-making processes at the city level and encourage, and in some cases incentivize, to inspire our community to support our work. If we are to facilitate widespread and transformative action, we need to work collaboratively, collaboratively throughout the community. And as a city organization, we will need to revisit our existing policies that unintentionally create hurdles to our path to carbon neutrality. And most importantly, it requires a framework for action that is constantly evolving, a framework that can respond quickly to changing conditions and opportunities, and that framework is the Carbon Neutrality Plan. Now, we are not alone in our commitment. This slide is to note that there are federal opportunities in place. The federal agenda, which was released in January of two thousand and twenty one, is as follows. These eight key actions were set forth in an executive order signed by President Biden. That include: centering the climate crisis and U.S. foreign policy and national security considerations, rebuilding our infrastructure for a sustainable economy, advancing conservation, agriculture, and reforestation, revitalizing energy communities, securing environmental justice, and spurring economic opportunities, and making evidence-based decisions guided by the best available science and data. And just yesterday, the Biden administration is doubling FEMA's budget to one billion dollars to help communities prepare for worsening climate-related disasters. Expanding on the idea of leadership, because we do hear a lot of concern of, about how leadership can seem like a lonely and scary or disadvantaged position to take. We sometimes hear that sentiment that if it doesn't matter what Flagstaff does in the grand scheme of things, are questions like, is anyone else taking this kind of action? And the answer is yes. There are many companies, foundations, and governments that are reading the same reports and coming to the same conclusions that our community did when they brought forward the Climate Emergency Declaration. Revisiting a few examples of this leadership, over nineteen hundred jurisdictions and local governments worldwide have declared a climate emergency, and these jurisdictions cover more than eight hundred and twenty-five million global citizens so far. And in addition to the federal agenda just reviewed on the previous slide, our government recently rejoined the Paris Agreement and has set goals for two thousand and thirty that are in line with the reductions that the IPCC report says is necessary. Flagstaff also joined the America is All In campaign, along with other, with over a hundred and sixty other local and tribal governments, as well as over thirteen hundred businesses and investors to support the federal fifty percent reduction target. The We Mean Business Coalition has more than seventeen hundred and fifty companies leading the way to take bold action. These companies represent almost twenty-five trillion dollars in market capital, and this is just a sampling. The We Mean Business Coalition recently submitted a letter, uh, signed by more than four hundred businesses and investors to the Biden administration to, quote, "call on you to adopt the ambitious and attainable target of cutting greenhouse gas emissions by at least fifty percent below two thousand and five levels by the year two thousand and thirty." Some of these four hundred businesses are even here in Flagstaff, including Amazon, Best Buy, Century Link, J.P. Morgan Chase, PepsiCo, Starbucks, Home Depot, Target, and Wells Fargo. Also, we've got other regional and local companies and institutions that have their own commitments, such as NAU, Purina, Gore, APS, and SRP. And again, this is just a sample. The world is looking at the early leadership, both large and small, from the European Union to New York City to communities like Flagstaff. I would like to give a shout out to some local companies that have been providing efforts to promote sustainability in our community. And we seem to have a little bit of a technology glitch there, but those are companies such as the Arboretum, Bricks, Jewelry Inn and Suites, Cozy Homes, E3, Fratellis, Hampton Inn and Suites, Mother Road Brewery, Museum of Northern Arizona, Prometheus, Rooftop Solar, Shift Kitchen and Bar. And again, these are just some Flagstaff businesses. And if you are a member of the Chamber of Commerce or Acona, we are going to be partnering with them to distribute a survey to help us in sustainability better capture information on what you as a local business are doing. Okay, so here we go with a clarification slide. One thing that we have been hearing is why should Flagstaff do this if China is putting in almost thirty-nine gigawatts of nuclear firepower capacity into operation? As we've been saying, this is about leadership. And this conversation really starts with leadership at the federal level. As I mentioned just a few slides ago, the new administration is working to re-establish the U.S. as a leader in climate action. And until we do, we may not hear more from, from China, but more importantly, the world is looking for early leaders. As we've talked about, taking leader, a leadership role is what the Flagstaff City Council and the Flagstaff community have done in declaring a climate emergency declaration. Carbon neutrality is too aggressive, is something we've also been hearing. This, we defer back to the data. We are behind in action, if you will, requiring, requiring us to take even bolder and more prescription action today. We'll talk about this in the coming slides. But let's talk about opportunities. Mayor and council, as I mentioned, you will hear a theme of leadership throughout our presentation today. Carbon neutrality necessitates it, and with leadership comes opportunity for inspiring collective action from our community. And there are endless opportunities to taking bold climate action and developing business. Two simple examples, or recent examples, are Moonshot. Up there on the NACET campus will offer scholarships for business coaching to businesses working to advance or advance carbon neutrality innovations and solutions. And then a business development project that is in the making is a proposed Restoration Soils Project. And this proposed facility could bring large-scale forest products and green waste recycling to northern Arizona. So with that, I will hand this off now to Ramon Alatorre.
Thank you, Nicole, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Ramon Alatorre. I am the Climate and Energy Coordinator. Um, I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about some of the technical analysis and how we get to carbon neutrality. Uh, I will briefly touch on, uh, the vision for Flagstaff that is outlined in the plan, as well as spend some time speaking to the goals of deep emissions reductions and carbon neutrality more broadly. Because at a high level, it is known what needs to be done in cities and sectors around the world to achieve these goals. There is a reason that the main elements of climate plans from around the world look remarkably similar. Our emissions come from specific sectors and activities. Therefore, we must address those sectors and activities. The recipe for achieving deep reductions is relatively straightforward, and thanks to the mantra reduce, reuse, recycle, it is one that we're all familiar with. First, we must reduce. Then, whatever cannot be reduced must be made cleaner. That is why reduce, reuse, recycle is said in that order, because it is the order of relative importance. So whether talking about buildings, transportation, or consumption, we must first reduce, then recognizing that there will still be energy used to heat and cool buildings, to transport people and things, to feed people and otherwise provide goods and services. The second step is to make sure that the remaining energy that is still consumed in all of these activities is as clean as possible. And that's it. That's the general recipe, and it is rather prescriptive. First, use less. Second, use clean. And these are the same approaches being used in cities around the world. And then for communities like Flagstaff that are looking at the framework of carbon neutrality, there could be a third prescriptive ingredient to this recipe. If a mess is still made, clean that up too. Which means that if there are still emissions produced by our community, then we need to balance with removal. In the plan, we refer to carbon neutrality as a framework of accountability. We also say that the framework establishes the, quote, "rules of the game," because as we all know, to be carbon neutral means to have net zero emissions, which is basically math, and math follows rules. In order to be carbon neutral, the first step required is to reduce emissions as much as possible. And as we've just discussed, the recipe for achieving reductions is to, one, use less, and two, use clean. However, knowing that emissions will still be produced in our community by two thousand and thirty, the second step is to measure the emissions that are still produced each year. And then the third required step is to balance the emissions still produced with an equivalent amount of carbon dioxide removal. We discussed carbon dioxide removal two weeks ago, and the city will have plenty of work to do in the coming year or so to begin developing, supporting, and deploying a portfolio of local and regional carbon dioxide removal initiatives so that they will have time to scale. Which brings us to the classic wedge diagram that we've been using since the two thousand and eighteen Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And now allow me a moment to once again unpack the wedge diagram. The top black line represents the business-as-usual scenario, whereby no action is taken to reduce or remove emissions from the atmosphere. Based on our models, it is expected that something like eight hundred and forty-six thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent would be produced in our community in two thousand and thirty without climate action. This is an approximately eleven to twelve percent increase from our baseline emissions in two thousand and sixteen. The increase is anticipated, given that without action, we would expect to continue seeing the trend of more miles being driven on our roads, more energy being used in our buildings, and more consumption and waste. The seven upper wedges with textured fill represent the reductions anticipated with climate action. These would come from our discussed recipe for reductions. First, using less, and second, using cleaner. When we look at our buildings, we see reductions in total energy use ranging from eleven percent in the commercial sector to forty-three percent in the residential sector. These reductions would come from a combination of actions to, one, reduce building energy demand, and two, use cleaner fuels for the building energy still required. In the transportation sector, we see reductions coming from, first, building a community that supports less driving, and second, using cleaner fuels for the driving that is still required. And in the waste sector, we see reductions coming from, first, producing less waste and diverting the waste that is produced to be two more productive end uses, and second, managing or cleaning the emissions from the waste that has already been produced. Clearly, however, these textured reduction wedges do not get to, to zero by two thousand and thirty by themselves. Thus, the greenish-blue wedge at the bottom, the wedge without texture, represents both the remaining emissions produced by our community and therefore also our carbon dioxide removal obligation. This bar graph gets rid of the textured reduction wedges that can perhaps be a bit of a distraction and just looks at the emissions still produced. Because emissions still produced is truly the bottom line. Based on all of the reductions anticipated, come two thousand and thirty, we expect to still produce somewhere around four hundred and seventy-one thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. These emissions will continue to come from buildings, transportation, and waste. And if we produce four hundred and seventy-one thousand tons, then we know that we must remove four hundred and seventy-one thousand tons. That is prescribed by the framework of carbon neutrality. These next few graphics are intended to provide a perspective on the spectrum of options available for achieving reductions within a handful of target areas. To orient you to the graphic, we have the status quo where the business is usual on the far left. Then a sampling of what we might call middle path climate actions, perhaps unsurprisingly in the middle. And then on the right, we have some of the examples of actions that go about as far as can be gone for the target area. These are actions that would potentially achieve the deepest reductions the fastest. You'll see that we believe the carbon neutrality plant sits in the middle path for many target areas, though there are a few where the actions being proposed are about as ambitious as can be. We'll start with clean electricity. The cleaner our electricity, and the faster it gets cleaner, the deeper our reductions will be. Currently, APS is projecting providing grid electricity that is about sixty-five percent clean by two thousand and thirty. With the installation of distributed renewables, we are anticipating electricity that is marginally cleaner than this in each sector. If you were to look back at the wedge, you'd see estimates for electricity that is somewhere between sixty-eight and seventy-two percent clean. This would be accomplished primarily through supporting the installation of renewable resources through education, incentives, and facilitating solar co-ops like the one that is happening right now. We also anticipate working with APS to stand up a few utility-scale solar projects. And within the plan document, we describe a nine-year glide path to net-zero building codes. But again, all of this only projects to get us to about seventy percent clean electricity. There are things we could do to see better than seventy percent clean electricity by the, two thousand and thirty. Rather than the nine-year glide path, we could accelerate the code requirements to arrive at net-zero building codes well before two thousand and thirty, as many cities around the country are doing. We could press APS to do better than sixty-five percent clean by two thousand and thirty. While not currently happening in Arizona, community choice aggregation is a strategy that many cities and other states are pursuing to get up to a hundred percent clean electricity in their community, often with the added benefit of reducing electricity rates for residents. Community choice aggregation could be a presentation of its own, so I won't try to unpack it in detail now. But the basic idea is that the municipality could procure clean power on behalf of residents, businesses, and municipal accounts from an alternative supplier while still receiving transmission and distribution services from the existing utility. Beyond community choice aggregation, Flagstaff could lobby and push for other tools that are not currently available in Arizona. These could include both residential and commercial pace financing. Traditional community solar whereby third parties, not just utilities, could install renewable energy installations for residents and businesses to purchase energy from. All this to say, when it comes to clean electricity, the actions outlined in the plan are pretty middle-of-the-path. We're mostly relying on the utility, and we're taking action to make marginal improvements on what they provide. When it comes to fuel switching, this plan again focuses on education and incentives while focusing primarily on retiring appliances. Natural gas has coined itself as the bridge fuel to a renewable energy future. By replacing appliances upon their retirement, we're simply starting the necessary walk across that bridge. And while a natural gas furnace installed tomorrow would be seen as a missed opportunity, people will certainly have the choice on what appliances they install in their homes. The plan does note on multiple occasions, including on page forty, how the negative impacts of carbon emissions have for the most part been treated as an economic externality up till now. While not necessarily imminent, the prospect of a federal price on carbon only increases as the While not necessarily imminent, the prospect of a federal price on carbon only increases as the climate crisis becomes ever more apparent. Therefore, for those that choose to go the route of less fossil fuel intensive options for their next appliance, a purchase that will likely be around for 20 years, they may be able to rest a little easier knowing that their choice will be less impacted if a federal carbon price were to come into effect. The approach outlined in this plan is to get education and incentives into the community so that the fossil fuel based appliances that are arriving at their natural retirement are switched at that point in time. Indeed, the stated goal is to see the switching of about 12,000 appliances in the next decade. And given that natural gas is connected to about 25,000 residences, and most of those residences probably have two to four appliances connected to the resource, this likely represents no more than 20 to 30% of appliances currently connected to natural gas. We know there is some education that needs to be done in the community, and that will probably miss many appliance retirements in the first year or two. But the vision is for the momentum to pick up once incentives are in place and more early adopters get to tell their story. Additionally, the vision stated in the plan is to develop incentive designs to help make the cost of fuel switching competitive and even beneficial compared to remaining on fossil fuels. Other cities and other states are going much further than Flagstaff, implementing electric-only ordinances and codes. This is not a tool that is available to Arizona cities due to state legislation passed last year. Still, with an approach on education and incentives designed to make fuel switching costs competitive, targeting appliances that are needing to be replaced, and paired with energy efficiency and demand management, the approach outlined in this plan is pretty middle of the path. We're simply setting out on the journey across the bridge towards a renewable energy future in earnest. When it comes to vehicle miles traveled, the plan calls for maintaining the internal VMT that was observed in 2019. This is a 17% reduction from the business as usual projection, and it will be a difficult lift that will require a new approach to transportation planning and infrastructure. A 17% reduction does not require that every Flagstaff bike in the middle of a blizzard, but it does aim to develop more connected and complete neighborhoods that reduce the need to drive across town as often. It also aims to provide infrastructure that will allow those that are interested the choice to use alternative transportation options that are safe and comfortable and frequent. Choosing to ride a bike on a nice day like today shouldn't feel stressful. Currently, many that would be interested in making the choice don't, largely because they don't feel safe or comfortable doing so. Other communities have far more ambitious VMT reduction goals for this decade, some even in the range of 30 to 50% reduction. Our early surveys floated reductions in this range, and responses from over 800 people were more than two to one in favor. Still, maintaining the 2019 VNT was determined as a goal that was both ambitious and attainable for our community. Once again, finding the middle path between the status quo and even more transformative targets. And while we would categorize many of the targets and actions as being rather middle of the path, there are some that are about as far down the path as perhaps can be expected. There are areas where we're pushing ahead, and we do want to be transparent about that fact. The plan calls for voluntary landfill gas flaring, meaning that this gas collection and the associated costs would not be triggered by the landfill reaching regulatory thresholds. The plan envisions as many as two gas collection systems, one that would be pre-installed during construction of the next landfill cell, so that that is expected to be online sometime this decade. And one retroactively installed in the currently opened and unlined cells, which are expected to be closed and capped sometime late to this decade. The retroactive installation may not achieve optimal collection efficiency, both because a pre-installed system is more effective and because the cells are online. Still, even with suboptimal collection efficiency, these voluntary actions could be some of the most effective and affordable actions in the plan. While we have made the case that simply replacing 12,000 fossil fuel appliances with clean fuel alternatives when they reach retirement is perhaps a middle path goal, the goal of retrofitting half of the existing housing stock is bold. A holistic retrofit would include not just switching to high efficient and clean fuel, but also improve the air sealing and demand management of the Yeah, that's part of Some retrofits could also include onsite renewable energy generation and perhaps even energy storage. And we know that water and energy are closely connected, and so many retrofits are likely to include measures and actions to improve water efficiency. Ultimately, it is unlikely that any two retrofits will look exactly the same, but we would expect them to include multiple of these elements to achieve significant reductions. This will be a big lift, but we also know that investments to make homes more efficient have payback periods measured in single-digit years. With targeted incentives, those that might struggle with the upfront cost to improve the performance of their home might be able to do exactly that, and then also enjoy the increased affordability that comes with reduced utility bills. This also represents a massive workforce development and jobs opportunity. We will need far more people and businesses than we currently have with the skills to do this kind of retrofitting work. And finally, we have listed carbon dioxide removal as a further down the path action. The Framework of Carbon Neutrality has put CDR on our radar in a way that never was before. Indeed, carbon dioxide removal was not mentioned once in the 2018 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Standing up and supporting local and regional CDR initiatives to balance our emissions produced is a bold step. And the projected amount of carbon dioxide removal required is quite high, in part because of the limited time and in part because of the middle of the path preference for reductions in other target areas. We must always remember, the more reductions we achieve, the less CDR we require. Which brings me back to this graph from two weeks ago when we were discussing carbon dioxide removal. Council requested that this be included in this week's presentation because it tells a story far beyond just carbon dioxide removal. A technical analysis of this graph clearly shows that this is the decade for action. The graph comes from the IPCC 1.5 report for policymakers, and I have added the red lines for emphasis. The horizontal red line represents net zero emissions on a global scale. We are well above that right now. The leftmost vertical red line represents the year 2030, and the rightmost vertical red line represents the year 2050. This graph plots multiple scenarios, again for limiting warming to 1.5 degrees or 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit. And as you can see, all scenarios envision the world arriving at net zero emissions sometime around 2050, followed by decades of net negative emissions from continued CDR. Additionally, the exact amount of CDR that will ultimately be required over the next century depends largely on the reductions achieved in the next decade. The report says that, quote, "avoiding overshoot and reliance on future large-scale deployment of carbon dioxide removal can only be achieved if global carbon dioxide emissions start to decline well before 2030." Additionally, the report emphasizes that, quote, "delayed actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions include the risk of cost escalation, stranded assets, and reduced flexibility in terms of future response options." These projections and conclusions are why this decade is seen as the critical decade for action. Any further delay in the scenarios for limiting warming to 2.7 degrees begin to fall apart, not to mention become more expensive. The Flagstaff Climate Emergency Declaration recognized these realities, which is why 2030 was selected as the target year for achieving carbon neutrality. This too is a repeat slide from the CDR discussion two weeks ago, but it warrants repeating. We have to acknowledge that the world is not going to arrive at net zero emissions by 2050 by having all countries and cities arrive simultaneously. We will not be able to all hold hands and watch as we each individually cross the net zero finish line at the exact same moment. The global outcomes needed will always be a game of averages. In order for the world to be here at this black dot in 2050, those that can will need to be here at this blue dot. Likewise, in 2030, in order for the world to be here at this black dot, those that can will need to be here at this blue dot. Success on a global scale will require leadership. Leaders will do what is necessary, first and early. Leaders will willingly pull their fair share, and then perhaps more because they can. Leaders will take necessary actions regardless of what others are doing. Leaders will help others succeed as well as hold them appropriately accountable. The Flagstaff community believes that we can be leaders, is why our community brought forward the Climate Emergency Declaration. I will wrap up the technical analysis section again with just a few clarifications. These are based on questions that we receive a lot. First, we want to acknowledge that we don't yet measure any existing nature-based carbon dioxide removal that is happening in our community. Flagstaff does have numerous natural landscapes that act as carbon sinks. Over the next two years, we will collaborate with partners and organizations, including NAU, the Forest Service, and ICLI that are working on protocols for determining what and how much existing nature-based CDR is appropriate for inclusion in our inventory. It will probably be appropriate to consider and quantify carbon dioxide removal taking place on city-owned open space, since we manage those areas and their continued protection will allow the CDR on these spaces performed to be preserved, in addition to allowing them to perform their many other ecosystem services. Once we have protocols in place, we would expect to find that some of the projected 471,000 metric tons of CDR obligation may already be on the scale. However, even if the entire area of Flagstaff were covered in forest, this would not satisfy our expected CDR obligation. Our carbon footprint is greater than our geographical footprint. Second, starting in 2019, the vehicle miles traveled metric being utilized in our inventory is the internal trips metric. This is different from the total VMT metric, which considers all vehicle miles traveled on our roads, including through trips, such as those vehicles on I-40 that pass by Flagstaff on their way to other destinations. The internal VMT metric considers only trips that both start and end within the community boundary. Both the internal and total VMT metrics are determined each year by metropolitan Flagstaff, metro plan Flagstaff. The decision to use internal VMT metric was based on considerations related to the city's sphere of influence. The actions that we take to make our community more connected and less dependent on cars while in town will have little to no effect on the traffic simply passing through. Also, as a community with an economy that is largely based on tourism, we want to welcome people to our city. And once here, tourists like locals will be able to take advantage and utilize the systems put in place to make our town less dependent on cars for getting around during their stay. Finally, we get a lot of questions about why our projections don't forecast any reductions in industrial natural gas usage. While the low-grade heat that is used in residential and most commercial applications can be electrified or switched to other renewable resources relatively easily, many industrial processes require high heat or even use natural gas or other fossil fuels as a feedstock. Generally speaking, these are harder problems from a decarbonization standpoint, and as an organization, the city is less familiar with how fossil fuels are currently being used for industrial processes in Flagstaff. This lack of information makes us less well-positioned to evaluate these uses or support Flagstaff industry in making these transitions. The city is prepared to develop education incentive programs to support residential and commercial entities. And while we are optimistic that industrial users will reduce their reliance on fossil fuels, including natural gas, due to our limited information and ability to directly support these users, we are not currently modeling any reductions from the industrial sector. Going forward, we will look to learn more about the industrial users in our community and their use of fossil fuels, and we will look for opportunities to support reductions. And finally, when talking about opportunities, most of the opportunities from the standpoint of technical analysis builds from the opportunity to work with partners and leading organizations to continue to develop and refine measurement and inventory methods. These could include working towards protocols for existing nature-based CDR accounting. Such an effort may well include our own GIS department. We might also work with partners and organizations on developing a consumption-based inventory. We've previously discussed with council, and the CMP describes how our current sector-based inventory methods don't capture embedded emissions. We would be excited to get better data on the distributed solar within our community. And these are just a few examples of some ways that we look forward to improving methods in the next two to five to 10 years.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ramon. Mayor and Council, we will now discuss the community conversations held over the last 10 months. Our Climate Emergency Engagement Framework was centered on earning trust and providing leadership within the restraint of the virtual landscape. We focused our efforts on communication and engagement. Immediately following the Climate Emergency Declaration in June of 2020 and utilizing the International Association for Public Participation Framework as a guide, sustainability's communication efforts included virtual person-to-person efforts, virtual group presentations, social media campaigns, community surveys, virtual open houses, information and updates on the city's website and sustainability's webpages, print and digital media campaigns, as well as information in newsletters. And not only our newsletter in sustainability, but with our various partnering organizations. Since July, we've conducted six community surveys. The first and second were single, open-ended questions designed to engage the community in a visioning process. They were intended to be very high-level, starting with the premise that the community and city council have established this goal, and then asking, what might it look like? How might we get there? These were followed by three additional surveys that were more extended in nature. One each to inform our updates to city council in October of 2020, March of 2021, and now today. The third survey was our first extended survey. And with 549 responses, it stands as one of the top five surveys in the history of the Flagstaff Community Forum platform. The survey walked folks through each target area, asked specific questions within each target area, and then asked for a general level of agreement for each. So some examples of specific questions asked within each target area include, "I would choose to ride my bike to work rather than drive if..." blank, or "the payback period would need to be..." blank, "for me to consider investing $1,500 in weatherization for my home." The fourth survey was facilitated between January and March of 2021. Compared to survey number three, it was scaled back in terms of total volume of questions, but following our presentation to city council in October, the goal remained to continue getting a pulse on the level of agreement for those target areas. Because of the overlapping questions between surveys three and four, you will see that results are combined in the slides that follow. While the first four surveys helped us to inform the first draft of the Carbon Neutrality Plan, the fifth and most recent survey provided an opportunity for community members to provide feedback on the first draft plan. The first, excuse me, the fifth survey launched shortly after our presentation to council on March 9th and remained open until mid-April. We received 226 responses, which was the fewest of our extended surveys. Indeed, we did see a downward trend from survey three to four to five in terms of responses, suggesting that perhaps there is some degree of survey fatigue and virtual fatigue. Rather than asking about a level of agreement within the target areas, we asked a series of questions to gauge attitudes towards climate change and climate action. Questions were something like, "I am personally concerned about the consequences of climate change." We also used the dot spending feature of the site to ask people to prioritize some of the opportunities for action within the target areas that were outlined in the draft plan. Mayor and Council, the next six slides provide an overview of survey results. Again, survey three was September through early November, and survey four was January through early March. For surveys three and four, we saw a total of 851 responses, though not everyone gave a response to every question. Hence, you will see the N value, or number of respondents vary somewhat from question to question. In general, we observed an unbalanced horseshoe shape to the responses. Both strongly agree and strongly disagree tended to score higher than their simple agree or disagree. Counterparts lending to the horseshoe shape. However, the total number in the favorable camp tended to be two to five times greater than the number in the unfavorable camp. Clean electricity is one of the most popular of all of the target areas, with over 3.5 times more favorable responses than unfavorable. Fuel switching appears to be one of the least well-understood, with more people choosing to skip the question for any of the other target areas. It also is the target area that seems to have the highest level of concern among residents. Many folks are familiar with natural gas, and they like that it is currently cheap. There is concern that without a federal price on carbon or without sufficient incentives in place, that switching could be more expensive than not switching, which is, excuse me, a valid concern. This highlights the need to design incentives to support that switching, and we know that that needs to happen, as well as the need to combine fuel switching initiatives with weatherization and other initiatives to manage and reduce energy demand so that switching can be more cost-effective. Here we see responses to the target areas for reducing building energy demand. Energy efficiency is very popular with 2.5 times more favorable responses than unfavorable, as well as the most popular of all target areas, improved materials management and landfill operation. Lots of survey respondents in our community are interested in increased access to composting, recycling, and other waste management issues. We're also starting to see that a cohort of between 130 and 180 respondents showed up to disagree with just about everything. This feedback is appreciated, and it is expected. We know that there is not universal, universal public agreement or consensus on any issues, much less climate action. And we do want to continue to hear people's concerns and have discussions, and otherwise consider how we might be able to address them. Okay, here we see the responses from the transportation-related strategies. Just to note that the transportation shift language has been updated to decrease dependence on cars, and you'll see that a little bit later in the presentation, and may have also noted that in the Carbon Neutrality Draft Plan. Also worth noting, at the time of these surveys, we were asking questions about a transportation shift that would see vehicle miles traveled reductions of 50%, which is quite a bit more ambitious than where the plan currently had settled, which again is to hold vehicle miles traveled study at the 2019 levels. With a favorable to unfavorable ratio of about 2.2, this was one of the least strongly supported target areas. We also observed a strong level of support from transitioning to electric mobility, nearly three times as many favorable responses as unfavorable. And finally, we have carbon sequestration, which has since been reframed as carbon dioxide removal to be more consistent with the language used by the IPCC and others. CDR has more neutral responses with 127 than any other target area. This was one indication to us that perhaps we need to expand our communications on CDR, and is, which is why we also held the work session just two weeks ago on the topic. In a lot of ways, our early messaging about CDR was mostly that it was a gap filler that would be necessary to achieve carbon neutrality. Our focus was on reductions, and rightly so. While both reduction and CDR are necessary, we've discussed how turning off the water is more effective and important than improving the drain. Still, going forward, we need to know that we still need to continue to expand the conversation on CDR, its opportunities, and potential co-benefits. Now, this slide represents demographics from survey three only. The demographic question was asked, "What neighborhood do you live in?" We were interested in knowing geographically who we were reaching and who we weren't. The darker shades indicate more responses. And so we see by this map that Sunnyside, University Heights, and Country Club Estates had the highest number of responses. And I'll just leave this slide, oh, slide up for a second if we could go back. Okay, next slide. Thank you. For survey number four only, we expanded beyond geography to ask some additional demographic questions. While these percentages do roughly match the Flagstaff population, according to the census, the census shows 78% of our population reporting as white. We also see that we have room to improve our outreach and engagement, especially with the underrepresented populations. Compared to our previous surveys, survey number five has much more of a balanced horseshoe distribution. We saw a cohort of about 80 to 90 people that are either, that either strongly disagreed or disagreed with the statements that they were personally concerned about the consequences of climate change or that Flagstaff needs to prepare for the impacts of climate change. While the number of people agreeing with these statements was greater, we were not seeing the same 2 to 5% or 2 to 5 times ratio of favorable to unfavorable responses that we did in previous surveys. It's important to note that 100 respondents didn't agree that Flagstaff needs to reduce our own greenhouse gas emissions, which was nearly identical to the 104 that agreed. We're showing these results because it's important that council understands the full breadth of the feedback we've gotten. So the first three graphs give some context when considering the final graph. We had between 80 and 100 people that showed up to say flat out they just don't believe in the issue. It appears that their feedback is less about the plan and more about the goal, or the fact of taking climate action at all. Nevertheless, the prompt, "The city is heading in the right direction with the draft Carbon Neutrality Plan", got the most negative responses of any question. We had expected 100 or so folks that clearly don't believe in the goal, and then we had 20 to 30 folks move from agree side of the spectrum to disagree side. Looking at the comments, many of these were from folks thinking that we are not doing enough. We saw quite a few folks disappointed with how much CDR we are planning. Then there were folks that thought we should be doing more to reduce emissions. A representative quote in this vein is, "Don't waste a lot of time or money on shell games like sequestration or offsets. Be laser-focused on driving down emissions." For survey five only, our demographic response for the final, or the fifth survey were similar to what we observed in the fourth step rate. We had a lot of members that are not concerned. And with that in mind, I just want to clarify, we had, we have six surveys. Our sixth survey just recently closed, and we have not dissected all of the results yet, but only 13 responses were submitted. We will provide that information at a later date. Okay, moving on to the Climate Emergency Steering Committee. So following the Climate Emergency Declaration, we immediately engaged with the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Steering Committee and invited new members to participate on the Climate Emergency Steering Committee. So following the technical analysis that came forward and Ramon discussed previously, the steering committee was tasked with reviewing the prescriptive target areas and informing the design of target strategies and actions prior to going to the community for public comment. The committee also provided perspective from their various organizations or sectors, helping to guide principles to rely on, and even identifying community tensions that the city should take into consideration. I want to take a moment to specifically thank the members of the Climate Emergency Steering Committee, including Rick Barrett, Greg Clifton, Justin Emrick, Dan Folk, Joe Galley, Jeffrey Gross, Todd Hanson, Gail Jackson, Natalie Jacobs, Megan Kelly, Dara Marx Moreno, David McCain, David McIntyre, Kate Morley, Matt Muchna, Amanda Armond, Justin Tillinghast, and Jed Westover. And to engage the Flagstaff community members to provide their input, which we just highlighted, we provided a number of platforms for engagement, including community forum surveys, virtual climate forums, virtual open houses, and online open houses. So some data points from the 2,600 community members that were engaged in this process. As we just discussed, the community forum surveys had almost 1,200 responses. The climate emergency forums, we actually held five of those and had 47 participants. Our Carbon Neutrality Plan open houses, we hosted seven of those and had 267 participants, while 121 people also logged into our open house site. And presentations, we gave 72 presentations over the last few months to 787 participants. Those were community groups and organizations. 373 participants were city commissions and staff. Moving on to clarifications, Mayor and Council, there has been some confusion regarding the total number of survey responses. And this was brought to our attention a few months ago, actually from a community member who posted this on Facebook. And so we thought we'd take the opportunity to provide a clarification. On your screen is a snapshot of the public view in the community forum platform. And as you can see here, it shows that the, this topic of how our, will our community achieve carbon neutrality has had 784 visitors with 162 responses. That's the public view. The staff view, which allows us to actually have, if you will, administrative view, actually shows the full number of responses. 549 responses were for individuals that were registered. Excuse me, 500 total 49, 549 responses reflected 387 unregistered responses and 162 registered responses. And so what this is showing is a discrepancy in the numbers that the community can see when they go on to the community forum website. We are in conversations right now with the developers to see if there's an opportunity to provide clarification, because we know that the community forum is an excellent tool for engagement for the entire community, not just for discussions around carbon neutrality. And we hope to find a solution to resolve this, so our numbers can be consistent, and we can continue to earn trust in the community that the information we're providing is accurate. And opportunities. We can absolutely embrace and need to ongoing dialogues with the Flagstaff community and specific sectors to inform program and policy development, as well as the implementation schedules related to the Carbon Neutrality Plan. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention again that this framework is constantly evolving. The plan is constantly evolving. And we know that we need to increase engagement and education to meet community members where they're at. As you'll see in a few slides and the implementation plan, we will be focusing on developing a business advisory committee that we hope when, if and when funding comes available, to work with businesses to develop incentives that are right for businesses. As we've talked a lot about in the past, we are in the process of developing an equity advisory committee, as well as a youth advisory committee to help us advance carbon neutrality goals and to develop programs and policies that are equitable and accessible to our full community. Mayor and Council, we are halfway through the presentation, and we've provided a lot of information to you already. So before we dive into the plan and really go into review of that framework, we can host any questions that may come up. And I know that we are also having a little bit of technical difficulty, so we will need to turn the presentation off and turn it back on. So if you see your screen go blank, please don't be alarmed. That is intended.
Thank you, Ms. Antonopoulos. Council, do we have any questions regarding what has been presented thus far? And this will be just for questions, not a bunch of comments. I did want to have the public be able to comment after the whole presentation before we delve into a thorough discussion. So if you do have any questions regarding this bit, though, yeah, if you have any cues, throw them in the chat box, and I'll give you a minute. I'm not seeing anything, so we are good for Ms. Nieman to take over here, it seems?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor Deasy. Thank you, Nicole. Jenny Nieman, climate and energy specialist. I am really thrilled to be here tonight. I'm going to talk through the Carbon Neutrality Plan. I know that we've given you all a lot so far, and what Ramon and Nicole really did is kind of frame this conversation and lead up to what went into this plan and how we got here. I want to pause today just to note, and, and I, just for everyone in the room, this plan is different than normal plans at the city in some ways. It's really this framework of action due to the urgency, right, of carbon neutrality. It doesn't say exactly how we'll get there, but what it does is it tries to put our goals out there and the strategies that we'll take to get there. And then it really asks the community to come with us on this journey. And, and rather than knowing every single turn that we'll take, what we want to really do is help folks know what is going to guide us along the way. So we're at this first step now, and, and we want to help folks take that first step with us to agree on the goals and the overall strategies. We've been listening to concerns and, and questions. We've been getting a ton of great questions about this plan. Those questions, Nicole has really gone through the, the breadth of the feedback that we've gotten. And, and I just wanted to kind of preempt what I'm going to talk about, because those questions and those comments have really helped us to change this plan since the March conversation, and we think really great ways. They have led to a lot of clarifications, and that's what we're talking about today. In the plan, we have 14 different discussions about our approach and things that are going to guide us, and I'm going to talk through those in a second. We have 37 call-out boxes in the plan, and these are really just to clarify, right? They're to define terms that might be new for some folks. A lot of these terms were new to me, I'll tell you, just a year ago. We want to add clarity. We also want to add local stories about how we're doing these things. And so this has added a lot to the plan. You probably noticed it got quite a bit longer. But it's also been really great to add to the conversation. So I'll start. Looking into the plan, it really sets these three overarching goals. These are pretty familiar, I think, to everybody by now, but they really represent the three types of climate action. Our first goal is to achieve carbon neutrality. As Ramon has discussed, we'll reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, and then we'll use carbon dioxide removal to balance out any emissions to actually reach neutrality. The next two goals carry forward from the 2018 Climate Action Adaptation Plan. They are about adaptation and equity, and I'll get into them a little bit. But we really just want to ensure that we're still keeping these two really key concepts in mind as we work. This is where we get into the approach. This is my favorite part of the plan. And, and I think that it really is actually the most important part of the plan. It starts on page 15, if you're looking at your plan. And, and this really just explains how we will work, and, you know, it outlines how we'll achieve our goals. So first, our approach has been informed by feedback from the community. This started from discussions with the steering committee, which really helped us get our guiding principles for how we would work. And then it all went all the way through to the surveys that Nicole just discussed. It really is our commitment to the community and how we will work. So the first category, other things about carbon neutrality, is that we need to be motivated by urgency. So this is due to the international consensus on the need for urgent climate action. We just don't have a lot of choice in what we must do to get to neutrality. Carbon neutrality is a commitment to accountability because of the cold, hard math that Ramon talks to us about a lot and that scale. It's also an investment in our future, because we know that the cost of climate change is incredibly high, and that inaction will be much more expensive than action. Finally, carbon neutrality is supported by market leaders, and we want to walk with those market leaders towards carbon neutrality. The other element of our approach, the second element, is about what Flagstaff will do and its role in carbon neutrality. First, Flagstaff will be a leader. We want to be a leader. Carbon neutrality requires leadership. The climate emergency required leadership. And so Flagstaff will need to continue to lead, making hard decisions and balancing community priorities as it works to accomplish its goals. We need to embrace the big shift, and, and this is really where we talk about the big changes in our community to achieve our very big goals. We also need to balance community tensions and create opportunities. We really want to embrace the discussion of our plans. We don't want to shy away from them. The 2018 plan did this. We talked about tensions within every single target area. This really goes back to the lead for, the need for leadership. Our community has a lot of different priorities, and we really want to be clear-eyed about how those priorities work together, right? And, and maybe they won't, right, in every single instance, but how can we have that open conversation? We want to have open dialogue, innovative thinking, and maybe most importantly, good faith that we can find creative solutions to help Flagstaff move forward. One example is in housing. We know that Flagstaff has incredible housing challenges, and, and those challenges are going to be exacerbated by climate change. We believe, though, that the solutions to the housing emergency and the climate emergency are often the same, and, and they can involve those big shifts to the community that actually can make our community better. Within the housing conversation, we, within the plan, got into this specifically about electrification. This comes up a lot, and so we just wanted to throw it out there. Ramon discussed this a bit earlier. Home electrification is a nuanced topic. Sometimes it gets, it's going to get down to the individual home and, and their appliances, right? And so we're going to need to be really careful as we go about electrification. We want to make sure that we're balancing these tensions, right? Flagstaff already has a high cost of living, right? So what we don't want to do is electrify a home and then have folks, you know, have higher utility bills at the end of it. That wouldn't be in line with the plan's three goals. It's not just about reducing emissions, right? It's about making our community stronger and looking out for our vulnerable community members. And so as we go about electrification, we deal with several challenges. We think about our high rate of rental housing. There you get into some mixed incentives, because renters have limited control, right? And landlords have a lot less motivation to make what might be, you know, costly investments in their appliances when they don't actually see the benefits in their utility bills, right? So we're going to focus first and foremost on helping our community members, helping them with health, helping them with resilience, and, and making the decarbonization of our building stock part of that overall story. This equitable transition has to meet people where they are. We're not going to just say, "Everybody's got to upgrade," right? "Everybody's got to electrify." We know that, you know, We know that, you know, we want our work to be a solution to existing challenges, right? We don't want to add on. So we go into more detail on this tension and this specific example, starting in page 24 of your plan. Just wanted to like take a moment to dig into that a little bit about how we'll do that. The 10th approach is really equity and adaptation, and I think I just talked about those enough there, but we need to make sure that those two values are present throughout all of our work. Finally, this is the last approach slide. This is what climate action can do. And first, climate action can produce a lot of benefits for our community. The co-benefits are many. Affordable living to better connections with our neighbors, right? To potentially more jobs and better access to forests. We know that there are so many good things that can come from this. We're also really going to rely on partnerships. Nicole already went into this, but this is really from the federal government to the state, to our many local businesses that are already working here. Prioritizing incentives, and this came directly from our Steering Committee and we heard it loud and clear. They really wanted us to do incentives first. And luckily, this is actually how we already work. One example is home residential energy efficiency. And so we want to have a home energy efficiency. It's one of our longest programs that we've worked on within the sustainability section. We do a lot to get there, right? And there's this kind of broad array of tools that the City of Flagstaff has. And I just want to clarify, we're going to be using those same tools, right, to get there. So first, we do social media campaigns. We remind folks, right, to maybe clean your air filters. We remind folks to, hey, have you, you know, looked at your windows? Maybe you need some insulation, right? Then we have free workshops. You can come to a live workshop. It can be at your own pace. It can be in English and Spanish. We give free workshops with free supplies to help folks make their own improvements to their home. Then we do incentives. We actually give cash rebates to folks if they had made the investment to get a higher efficiency furnace, or maybe if they've insulated their attic. And then finally, we do use building codes. And that's because this is a sort of community-wide policy that helps us achieve the minimum efficiency requirement through the building code. What this does is it takes advantage of the ability to affect all new buildings across Flagstaff at a time when we have the best opportunity to do so, when it's the least expensive and when we can ensure efficiency. So I just wanted to kind of lay out those four different areas that we do just already for energy efficiency and ensure folks that this is what our approach is going to continue to look like. Finally, you know, you've heard this a lot. This is a living document. We need to move fast. We've got about eight years at this point at the end of the day, right? And so we need to iterate and we need to adapt over time. We're going to work with the community. And that adaptation and that iteration is really related to these 13 other principles of our approach here. We're going to keep all of this in mind and we're going to keep working with everybody, with our stakeholders, with our partners as we iterate and adapt over time. All right. Back in familiar territory, now going to review the ways that we're going to get to carbon neutrality. We have these four focus areas, our neighborhoods, our energy sources, our consumption and our commitment. They really help us to organize our work. The first is, you know, rethinking our neighborhoods. So how we use our land, how we get around town and how we relate to each other. The next is energy sources. This is what fuels we use in our homes and our vehicles and where our electricity comes from. Consumption, that goes back to reducing, as Ramon talked about, and reducing our energy use and the materials we buy and then making them a little bit better. Finally, our commitment, which is how we balance this all out and get to carbon neutrality. Our first key action area is our neighborhoods. So I'm not going to spend a ton of time in these. I know Council has seen these before. You'll see echoes of this from our conversations in October and January and in March. And so I just want to kind of go quickly through these. Community resilience, we have added more to this. We realized in the last one, we didn't build it out as much like a target area, same for equitable systems. And so this is where we incorporate adaptation, that overarching goal. We need to incorporate resilience into all of our actions. This is going to require that our work does two things, that our work is future-proof, right? And that it's prepared for change and, but also that it helps our own community members become more resilient. Maybe this is businesses, maybe this is residents, helping them prepare for change. Community resilience can really help Flagstaff to bounce forward after events and can just make our community stronger even on a great day. The next is equitable systems. Again, this is an area that needs to be addressed with all of our climate actions. It means that the work that we do to reach carbon neutrality must be fair, it must be transparent, accessible. We want to make sure we avoid causing harm. We also want to make sure our programs are accessible to all members of our community. This is all in line with the Climate Emergency Declaration, which was really focused on community equity and broad community participation. Equity also involves efforts beyond climate action. We need to ensure that the city's actions in general promote equity because to have a strong community, we need to have an equitable one. Finally, we get to decrease dependence on cars. So this is kind of more of a true target area and it's a big one for good reasons. It involves rethinking the way that we do plan our transportation systems, but also the way that we plan and operate in our neighborhoods. Right now, we're pretty dependent on cars. Most people are. This is true across the country, but we know that a lot of people in a lot of cities have been able to decrease that dependency. This is better for our wallets, for our health, for our community in general, for individuals, right? And all it's going to involve is making kind of, not all, but it's going to involve making changes to how we operate, right? Both on a city level, but also within our neighborhoods. And how do we create networks for walking and biking, helping folks from get A to B? How do we think about our existing neighborhoods and how they might change? The next part of this long target area, we want to think about encouragement. How do we help folks, you know, changing behavior? You know, policies, how the city works in planning and, you know, our systems and developments, supporting transit operations. I do want to call out GD6 here. We changed this a bit. It used to refer to CMAC, which is a federal program. We wanted to just talk about investment because this really better describes what we're trying to do. Community feedback really influenced us here. What we want to do is we want to be proactive in keeping our air clean. This can actually help us avoid regulation if we make the investments in our clean air. All right. So here are some highlights. And I just want to pause here because it speaks to the big shift and the decreased dependence on cars. We want to be really, really clear with Council and the community about what is necessary to make the big shift. We've gotten a lot of feedback about our goal to maintain vehicle miles traveled or VMT. We've only seen VMT grow in the past and I agree with folks who say that it's going to be difficult. It will. But we haven't necessarily put a goal out there to maintain VMT ever. And if we change the way that we do business, we think that we can get there. It's going to take a concerted and sustained effort. It's going to have to be coordinated across the entire city with our partners, right? And so to that end, we just really need to be clear-eyed about what this big shift entails. We need this big shift to get to carbon neutrality. So we're going to have to make some hard decisions. We believe though, that those decisions can have numerous benefits from lower housing costs to safer neighborhoods. We'll need to start reducing parking requirements. This leads to less driving. We need to work on accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Council's already begun to do this. We'll need to look at our existing residential neighborhoods. They comprise a huge portion of Flagstaff's limited land. And we want to think about how can we increase flexibility? How can we raise densities? How can we introduce greater attainability and diversity of housing types? And at the end of the day, welcome more neighbors, right, in these existing areas. And so while we do that, we'll want to think about how do we change our streets? A lot of cities have done this, particularly in the pandemic, throughout their communities. How can we make our streets safer for all modes? How can they create social and business opportunities? People, I've heard streets called play streets, right? Or safe and social streets. How can we do that to make our streets do more work for us? Because they actually take up a lot of room in our community. We've put a lot of investment into them. The changes I've listed here are big changes and so we just wanted to be clear, we know this is going to take a lot. It's going to require significant revisions to Flagstaff zoning codes, to our transportation engineering standards, to a lot of other policies. And we need to invest in the analysis and the, excuse me, staffing to undertake this big shift. But we really think that through these changes, they have benefits throughout our community, not just for emissions, but they make us stronger, they improve livability, they improve health, they improve resilience and economic vitality. There are a lot of things that this big shift actually helps. And we've seen a lot of other communities across the country making these big shifts in a, in a way that helps all of these different goals, not just climate action. So I have some clarifications too. You know, on the target areas we discussed, discussed, some of them relate to the strategies that I talked about, but some are about the opportunities for action. I didn't get into those details. They are within your plan. And so under each strategy, we have those opportunities for action. And so we're getting a little bit into the weeds here, but they're important to talk about. The first is about traffic impact analysis. So we call this a TIA. We do TIAs for large new developments. They help us understand how a development, how a new building or a grocery store or apartments might impact traffic. And what we would like to do is we would like to incorporate a calculation of greenhouse gas emissions into that TIA. This is really important because we're calculating how it's going to change, you know, how cars get around town, right? What we want to do is calculate also how it's going to change our greenhouse gas emissions. And we've gotten some concern and it's absolutely valid where folks says, is that yet another thing? Is that require a consultant or something to do? And I just want to clarify, this isn't going to be a large burden. We already get the trips, right? We already get, within this study, we know how a new development is going to bring cars in. It's just kind of a multiplication factor, right? To understand how that relates to emissions. Luckily, our driving is completely correlated with greenhouse gas emissions, so it's not a big step to get there. Carbon neutrality alignment statements. This is also where we have some confusion and where community feedback really helped us to get this right and make this better. So in the March draft, these were referred to as carbon neutrality plans for developments. I think we made some people think that we needed every single development to be carbon neutral. That is not what we need. It'd be great, but it's not what we are saying. What we're trying to say is we want to understand how developments, so maybe that's a grocery store again, or maybe it's an apartment building, how those developments are contributing to the city's climate goals? How they are contributing to us getting to carbon neutrality? Council already hears about this a lot. Community already hears about this a lot. What we want to do is kind of make a more formal way to get that information. We actually think that it's going to really help out developers, right? Because it's going to help them communicate what the city's looking for, right? And communicate to the community how they are helping Flagstaff to get closer to this goal, right? We think that this is going to be a good opportunity also for Council in terms of making decisions because they're going to have all of the information and have it in a little bit more of a formal way. Finally, I just want to make sure we know, because sometimes it can be lost in all the details, climate change is going to have an effect on housing and we want everybody to kind of be really clear-eyed about this too. Central Arizona is going to see more and more extreme temperatures and we know that temperatures in central Arizona really affect visitation up to Flagstaff. We expect those temperatures to lead to increased pressure on our housing market. And we just want to make sure everyone's aware of those growing pressures and can make decisions accordingly because we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about kind of, that can sometimes be the elephant in the room in terms of challenges that we're going to start, that we can kind of see coming down the line. All right. Opportunities are better. This relates to my last point, but when we talk about the housing emergency and the climate emergency, the solutions are often the same. We need more homes in our community and we need to make some big changes in how we get there. Shifting our transportation, this is also a good story. This is about providing more good options. Ramon said, you know, it's not about getting everybody on a bike in the blizzard, but maybe during that blizzard, we actually can hold up the bus, right? As a great way to get around town. That keeps us all safer, right? It keeps car crashes from happening. We can give folks another option, right? Instead of having to drive in a blizzard, right? To actually just hop on the bus because the bus is actually really great at getting around in the snow. And so how can we think about that, right? We also want to provide good options in, or good options, yeah, in good weather, right? On sunny days, just because active transportation is good for our community, it's good for individuals, it's less expensive for all of us, right? And it's good for health. We also want to clarify, whenever we talk about transportation, we might hear, well, what about the visitors? Or what about the residents? Or what about the students, right? This is going to take all of us. This is going to take all different groups. And we don't see that we need to group folks by who they are or why they're traveling. Instead, what we want to look at is most trips on Flagstaff are under three miles, right? That's true across the country. How can we convert not all of those trips, but some of those trips to walking, biking, the bus, maybe other modes of electric mobility, right? We really want to look at the trips where it's going to be easy to convert folks, to help them again, take advantage of more good options. All right. Another clarification is about some of the changes inherent in the big shift. I just want to emphasize, we see a lot of these changes as providing cost savings and business opportunities. For instance, reducing parking minimums can be good for everybody. It actually increases the amount of economic activity on our land. It increases business opportunities. Changing the zoning code can create more opportunities for residents and, you know, we also can help folks get to work. So that's just, we see a lot of benefits to these things that go far, far beyond just climate. And finally, I just want to emphasize the importance of adaptation. We see change coming. What we want to do is we want to help residents and we want to help businesses to be prepared for those change and adapt to those changes. All right. Back to energy sources. So these energy sources, y'all are pretty familiar with, they're pretty standard climate action. The first is electric mobility. So this deals with the fuels that we put into our cars as well as other modes of transportation. Because we want less driving, we actually want to think about buses first. Mountain Lion is on board, they're going to be piloting electric buses. We want to think about micro-mobility, so we do define that in the plan. Those are small devices that help folks get around town. You might see kids on scooters or hoverboards around your neighborhood. The reason they're on them is because they're fun and they're cheap and they help you move just your body, right? Instead of maybe me driving my one-ton car around downtown. Finally, we want to support folks in the transition to electric vehicles. This really is about working with the market because electric vehicles make a lot of economic sense now, especially when you think about the cost of fuel. Finally, clean electricity. We will obtain as much of our clean electricity from clean sources as possible. This is really great because electricity can get cleaner over time. The first step here is we need 100% renewable for all City of Flagstaff municipal needs. Then we're going to think about clean electricity and production on new buildings as well as existing buildings. Next is fuel switching. Flagstaff needs to switch our fuels from fossil fuels to electricity. This is specifically for within our buildings. And so when I say fossil fuels, I just want to clarify, I'm really talking about natural gas and propane. This is because natural gas, gas and propane are non-renewable resources with very significant emissions. And what we want to do is we want to help our buildings to switch from relying on natural gas and propane to relying on electricity for their heating needs and their appliance needs. This is a switch that's happening across the country and it's really exciting because it means that our buildings cannot, when they are on electricity, that they can get cleaner and cleaner over time. What's critical to remember is that APS, our electricity utility, has committed to going to 100% carbon-free electricity by 2050. So regardless of what the City of Flagstaff does, it means that if all stays on track, the electricity coming into our homes will be carbon-free. So if my water heater is on electricity, that will, it will be carbon-free in 2050. And this is really great because we know that fossil fuels like natural gas and propane cannot get cleaner over time, right? And so we want to help folks to make this switch. Our strategies here are similar to cleaner energy. We want to look at the City of Flagstaff's municipal buildings. We want to look at new buildings and then existing buildings. Finally, we know we have a lot of training and education to do here. We have a lot of clarifications particularly related to electrification. And as Nicole mentioned, we've got some confusion about this topic. I want to talk about electric home heating. The good news is, technology has improved significantly. There are a lot of studies across cities that show that even in cold climates, electrification can reduce costs over the lifetime of appliances. Heat pumps can heat homes in cold climates, they're highly efficient. And compared to a gas furnace, they use two to five times less energy. Our fuel switching activities, knowing all of this. We want to clarify that our work is going to use the tools at our disposal as a city. So that's education, resources, incentives. It's going to be similar to the energy efficiency work I talked about before. We're not going to mandate natural gas use. There will not be penalties for natural gas use. We actually cannot do any of those things due to the state legislation, but we also, that's not how the city works anyways. Again, we're going to work on education, on resources and on incentives. We know that this is going to be a long road.[1716.21] And so I just want to emphasize too, that electrification is going to happen over time. We're going to focus on new buildings, right? That's a great place to focus on. And we're also going to focus on when equipment is at the end of its life. So if you know that your water, uh, heater is getting older, then that's a great time to consider electrification. A couple more clarifications. Equity is really important to this plan. It's going to be incredibly important, particularly with electrification. Again, on page 24, we kind of talk about the intersections here. We've heard a lot about the building code and what it might require. And I just want to clarify one thing that we often hear about this. The new billing code, it was adopted in 2019. It requires a really small upgrade to garages and the plug that's available in your garage. This will make it a lot easier to char- to charge an electric vehicle. And we know that our homes, which lasts, let's say 80 years, we know that maybe longer if we're lucky, right? We know that those homes are eventually going to be using electric vehicles. That's where the market's going. And so this $200 upgrade can actually save homeowners thousands of dollars, hundreds or up $2,000, um, in savings, right? Because we've done this in the beginning of the building. And so a lot of the things that we talk about, we're trying to hit them right at the right time where we can get the least expensive change, right? And the most efficiency and the most benefit. Just another, uh, clarification, we know that there are negative impacts of all, uh, energy generation types. Uh, you don't have to be around the internet long to hear about, you know, concerns about wind or concerns about utility scale solar. And, and we just want to assure folks, um, we're, we're calculating all of that, right? And the negative impacts of these renewable energies are far, far lower than those that are, uh, for fossil fuel energy generation. This all goes into the city of Flagstaff's decision-making processes. Finally, the city is really going to carefully weigh competing values. You know, we, we've heard, oh, are you going to cut down all the trees for solar? No, absolutely not, right? Um, we know that existing tree cover is really important within the city, right? For so many reasons. And so we're going to keep weighing those values as we do all the time. Opportunities are a lot better to talk about. So Ramon talked about this before. We don't predict or model, uh, natural gas reductions in the industrial sector. Any reductions there will actually help us to get to carbon neutrality more quickly. So any of our big industrial users, right? If they are making switches to electrification, that's actually going to help us, um, in ways that we didn't even account for. We also can go behind, beyond EVs. We've heard this from community members of, why aren't you thinking about hydrogen? Um, and we're here to say, we, we are absolutely open to any technology that's going to get us there, right? Hydrogen fueling, uh, it can work in a lot of different vehicles. We have seen this technology continue to evolve. Uh, we were recently on a panel where Mountain Lion was looking at that, um, possibly. They ended up going with electric vehicle, but we just want to say, we are really open to whatever technology is going to help us, uh, reduce emissions the fastest. I want to shout out here, we've talked about it a little bit, but the Northern Arizona Solar Co-op. This has already led, and, and this has just been a project for, I think, six months. Uh, $1.8 million invested in local businesses, jobs and clean electricity. We are so excited about this. Eighty-two contracts have been, uh, signed. And this is going to avoid 12,000 tons of CO2 just from the contracts that we've seen already. We want to do more with the Arizona Solar Co-op. We want to think about maybe a business co-op, another round for residents. There's so much opportunity here. Finally, there, there are so many jobs and cost savings, uh, within this focus area. On an electric vehicle, it's like buying gas for a dollar a gallon, right? So it's about making that initial investment to be able to see those benefits later. All right, I promise I'm getting to the end here. This next one is about, uh, our consumption. So we need to reduce building energy use. Again, this is that first step. We know that reducing building energy use and energy efficiency are the cheapest ways to achieve carbon emissions reductions within our buildings. So we're going to look at the city of Flagstaff, we're going to look at new homes, and then we're going to look at existing homes. Sustainable consumption and waste management, again, the most popular target area by our surveys. Uh, this is really about what we consume and how we deal with any disposal. Consumption is most part of the problem. We talk about recycling a lot, but the consumption of goods is actually what we want to work on first. And we want to rethink of the, rethink the way that we consume, uh, goods and food. Then we think about waste on the other side of it. In terms of clarifications, we just, we've heard a lot of feedback from this in the community. And we just want to clarify the transition of the Flagstaff Materials Recovery Facility. Sometimes we call this the MRF. This is going to transfer to a, transition to a transfer station. We don't anticipate that this is going to lead to a significant change in emissions. Um, and it actually will allow Flagstaff to recycle more materials. All of our waste is, is, not all of our waste, most of our recycling is leaving Flagstaff, right? It already does. And so we're thinking about these emissions within this transition. Um, most of it's already going to Phoenix, right? And then going to larger markets. And so we really feel that this transition is going to be good, not only from an emission standpoint, but also just from the amount of materials that we're able to accept. And, and again, keep away from the landfill. In terms of opportunities, we're excited. We've partnered with Economic Vitality. Um, the Innovative Waste Challenge is a really fantastic program that like lets us give seed funding to businesses, right? Who are innovating in this field in ways that are good for our community. So it's really exciting. Net zero energy homes, they're becoming more widespread. They have a ton of benefit. They're already here in our community. And, and we just want to kind of encourage them, figure out what works and learn from them. Finally, reducing building energy use. This is where we can reduce the cost of living. That there are a lot of benefits to, uh, reducing or investing in our homes so that folks can have lower energy bills. All right, finally, CDR, uh, Ramon is the expert here. I'm not even going to try to go where he has taken y'all. But this is really about, uh, measuring the remaining emissions in our community. Again, with CDR, we're going to think about local, right? We're going to think about regional, we're going to think about as much as we can keeping this investment and these investment dollars in our community. CDR is a really necessary part of any carbon neutrality portfolio. We just can't get the emission reductions that we need to in time. But we do want to make it so that CDR can be beneficial to, uh, the Northern Arizona region. In terms of clarifications, we've got a lot of questions. What about the trees? And, and I get it. And, and so the city's natural landscapes do act as carbon sinks. We have forests, wetlands and open spaces. We're thinking we have about 23% of, uh, the city of Flagstaff is, has tree cover, right? So these are carbon sinks and they are removing carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. However, what we want to do is we want to sort of do, we need to do more than that, right? We want to account for that and, and Ramon talked a little bit about that before. Uh, but we know that we need to go beyond just the trees that we have within the city of Flagstaff to meet our carbon dioxide removal needs. Other things in terms of opportunities, there is a lot of innovation out here. And so we can work with partners to, um, advance protocols for calculating nature-based CDR. Again, that goes back to our trees and our wetlands event. We also want to think about CDR initiatives in Northern Arizona. We do have a lot of land in Northern Arizona, maybe not in Flagstaff, but outside of, of Flagstaff. So how can we work across the region and help businesses take advantage of the national search for CDR innovation and solution? And, and really we need creativity here. Finally, this is a huge opportunity for collaboration with NAU researchers and our regional partners. All right, I'm going to wrap up here. I just wanted to kind of highlight the implementation schedule. This is within your plan, it's in the implementation section. So before we get into the target areas, we kind of just wanted to lay out the first three years or really two and a half years. This is, these are the things that we're going to start with. These things are not all funded, right? They are not all, you know, passed or had these conversations with the community, but they're just ideas for what we can do. So I just want to make that clarification here. But there's a lot of co-opportunity. You know, I know that because this plan is broad and because it is a framework, it can make folks feel a little bit nervous about, well, what does this really mean? We have tried to put, um, everything that we could potentially do, um, within the, this implementation section. It takes up two plant, two pages within the plan. Um, and, and we may find other opportunities. Again, we have to be able to adapt to them. But this is what we're seeing right now as some really, really solid sort of first steps, right? It goes from an electrification information hub to help folks understand electrification, understand heat pumps, to a building code advisory group to help us do what we need with our building code. You know, electricity rate optimization program. This is really kind of cleaning up our own shop within the municipality, um, as well as feasibility analysis for CDR. So there's a lot of different things, but we wanted to just provide some clarity about the actions that the city may start to take as we move forward. Nicole, I am happy to pass it off to you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Mayor and Council for our firing list. I ask that you take a moment to envision Flagstaff as a healthy, affordable, livable, walkable, resilient and carbon neutral community. One that promotes and accelerates renewable energy, reducing waste, helps bolster a thriving economy, is an inclusive community, has secure water sources, has affordable, accessible and multimodal transportation, and has connected neighborhoods with neighbors helping neighbors. We believe that the carbon neutrality plan will help foster this type of community. And with that, we are open to any questions or comments about the draft plan. And following public comment, we look forward to council's direction regarding the potential adoption of the plan, which is tentatively scheduled, uh, for June 15th, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Antonopoulos and the whole sustainability team. And just a really great presentation. I really appreciate you, uh, laying it out so thoroughly to our community. This is a real important thing for all of us. With that, we do have quite a few public comments. Uh, I'm hearing 20 with three minutes each. Uh, so I'm thinking that this might be a good time to take a little break. Um, let's reconvene here at 4:55 and 12 minutes. And then we'll get the public comments and then, uh, turn it in for questions and discussion on council. Sound good? Awesome, thank you much, 4:55, we'll be back.
Now.
Excellent. Well, we are to the, uh, public comments section of our carbon neutrality plan discussion. And, uh, Ms. Saltzberg, if you would like to get some of the public participants on the phone.
My, my name is David Spence. I'm a homeowner in, in Sunnyside. Thank you for, uh, taking my call. I strongly support the carbon neutrality plan as drafted by the staff. And I do have several comments that would help in implementation. First of all, the plan mentions flaring the gas, the methane gas at the, uh, Cinder Lakes landfill. My suggestion is, and the, and the staff out there, uh, think this is a good idea, to use the heat generated by burning the methane for some missful purpose. And my suggestion is to consider killing drying lumber. Locally cut ponderosa could be made into more valuable lumber, uh, by having it killed by. Second thing is community scale composting. The sooner we do this, the better to reduce, uh, landfill volumes and to generate compost for our gardens. And, uh, the city could interact with Rolston Purina. At the corner of Purina Drive and, and Country Club, there is a beautiful piece of land that could be used. I commend the staff for mentioning hydrogen. We could have green hydrogen available influx staff from our three, uh, big wind farms that are going in. When, when they generate more electricity than the grid can accept, they could power electrolyzers to generate hydrogen for our local economy. And if we have a hydrogen fueling station, we will attract visitors and industries that could use the hydrogen. So it's a fuel of the future. And finally, the plan stresses micro mobility. We in Flagstaff have a company called Planet Rider that in the very near future, a year or two, will be producing a reverse tricycle, human-electric, uh, micro mobility that will be good for commuters. So this is something that, uh, is very commendable in the carbon neutrality plan to promote micro mobility. So it's, it's a good plan and I encourage the council to adopt it. Thank you for taking my input.
Thank you, Mr. Spence. I really appreciate these suggestions. This is really great. I'm not seeing comments and sees or cues in the chat box, so, uh, next public participant.
Mayor, I have Steve on the line. Steve, you may go ahead and give your public comment now.
Okay. Well, let's see, so for all of you on the city council who are thinking this sounds risky or a little too crazy, uh, a couple benefits that you might not thought of. One is if you help us in marketing the Flagstaff to your tourist audience. What makes Flagstaff unique is that sort of ecological wilderness quality that I'm going to go to. Second thing I'd say is, you know, certain things that's the patriotic thing to do. Uh, if you're concerned about the welfare of your tribe or your friends and family or yourself or this country, thinking about future problems and sort of trying to anticipate solving this problem ahead of time is a good way to go. Plus, you'll look like genius is 20 years from this year. You're the people who will have thought of this, of being, dealing with this problem first. That will be a really good value for your grandkids and future generations, so thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you so much. Next public participant.
Hi, I'm Mandy, you can go ahead and speak now.
Thank you. Mayor DC Vice Mayor Daggett, council members, my name is Amanda Armin. I'm a resident and a 30-year expert in the energy industry. And I'm also a member of the CAP Steering Committee. Wanted to make two points to you today. First is that the carbon neutrality goal by 2030 is achievable. And it's also achievable while maintaining affordability. We need to make sure, as staff mentioned though, that we are working together, citizens, businesses, nonprofits, governments, to be able to get to achieve the goals. My second point is that city council leadership and action is absolutely fundamental to respect both the past of where we've come from, but to set a bold vision for the future as there's great opportunity in the clean energy future. Since 2018, when I started participating or when the city first passed a carbon plan, the energy landscape has changed dramatically. We now have technical studies that show that we can get to 80 and 90% carbon-free energy by 2030 and do it cost-effectively. Wind energy, solar energy are now the cheapest sources of electricity in Arizona and the country. So the clean, carbon-free stuff is now the cheap stuff. In fact, solar and wind with storage technology for utilities is coming in through utility bids cheaper than natural gas for power generation. We also have alternatives to gas for heating, which obviously is a big issue for Flagstaff. We are going to need to pay attention to how to make sure that those with high energy cost burdens, so low-income people that are, that are dependent on gas for, for heating, that they're not left with old polluting equipment that's really expensive to run. So to me, this is an area where we need collaboration with the gas industry if they're willing. So we can identify strategies to use gas in its highest and best use. The transition of the energy industry as a whole is well underway, both nationally in the state. So we want to grab onto this opportunity. As the city council, you have the opportunity by adopting the carbon neutrality goal to place a region above others in the state and encourage investment by clean energy industries. To me, this is a really opportune moment because the federal government is just now starting to prioritize investment in clean energy and carbon mitigation strategies. We know that leading tech companies have carbon reduction policies and they want to locate in areas where the policies are supported. Uh, the jobs of the future are in clean energy and energy control technologies, not in fossil fuels. As an example-
Hi Amanda, I'm, I'm sorry, but you're out of time.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Amanda. I, I appreciate it and thank you for, uh, serving on the steering committee to seeing this, uh, in development. Uh, next public participant.
Dara, go ahead and start.
Great, thank you, uh, mayor and council. Thank you for your leadership in supporting decisive climate action in Flagstaff without delay. My name is Dara Marx Moreno. I've lived in Flagstaff for 21 years and spend each day working to support tribes across the country in their climate adaptation and air quality efforts. With our federal government making important climate supportive decisions, we need to ensure that we are well positioned to apply for any potential federal funding for climate action that may become available in the months and years to come. And having a carbon neutrality plan in place is critical for proving our readiness to receive grants. This year, my family and I have been working on electrifying our house to eliminate natural gas and we join the solar co-op. Once this project is completed, our home will be net zero. I am learning so much through this process, but we definitely don't have the time or expertise to do it alone. So far, we have utilized experts like Cozy Home, E3, Radiance Heating and Plumbing and Rooftop Solar, as well as a contractor and interior designer, a plumber and several electricians. There will also be materials that we need to purchase, most likely through locally owned businesses. That is a really large number of local businesses that we are working with and supporting, all in the name of reducing our family's carbon footprint. I tell this story to highlight what an incredible economic development opportunity the carbon neutrality plan is. As we, we as a city move towards carbon neutrality, we will absolutely need experts in many areas- we will absolutely need experts in many areas to help guide and implement the changes that we will be doing. This has far-reaching benefits with a positive domino effect across our community. Besides the clear economic development opportunities in the building industry, there are also other sectors that will see economic benefits. Healthier forests benefit both the tourism industry and our large forestry industry. Lower drought risk benefits our local food growers. Healthier air quality leads to kids missing fewer days of school, which has long-term benefits for their economic earning potential. Cleaner air, both indoor and outdoor, improves the lives of our most vulnerable residents, which in turn benefits society as a whole. I could keep going about how much active transportation improves our lives and economically benefits our bike shops and bus system, how lowered wildfire risks are possibly the most critical existential reason to support climate action, and so on. But I know you all know this already. Having served on the steering committee for the carbon neutrality plan, I can attest to the expansive community outreach that was done. For the last year, every stakeholder, from business owners to environmentalists, to Unisource Gas, to the Chamber of Commerce, to APS, to professors, to representatives from underserved populations, were asked to be on this steering committee or to provide input through open houses and surveys. The city's Sustainability Section really went above and beyond to ensure stakeholder input. I fully trust that this council will do the right thing for Flagstaff, for Arizona, and for the world by adopting the carbon neutrality plan without delay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Marks Moreno, and thank you for all of your efforts in the community and surrounding community for sustainable environmental sustainability. Next caller, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Karen Potter on the line. Karen, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Good evening, Mayor DC and Flagstaff City Council members. My name is Karen Potter, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project, otherwise known as SWEAP, a regional public interest organization focused on eliminating waste from power generation and transportation systems in order to save all Arizona's money. SWEAP supports the city's carbon neutrality plan, and we urge you to support it for two major reasons. One, it focuses on mitigating the negative impacts of climate change while bringing the most benefits to Flagstaff residents. The city's plan will result in numerous benefits, including public health, increased resilience, and improved economic opportunities to spur local job creation, as well as reduce energy burden. The benefits of the plan are apparent in the goals for reducing building energy usage. There are more than 43,000 well-paying energy efficiency jobs across Arizona. And more than 1,000 of those jobs are in the Flagstaff area alone. With climate action goals that focus on reducing energy usage, these types of goals will only continue to flourish in Flagstaff. Also, we support the plan because it protects vulnerable and low-income communities by preserving cost-effective energy options. The city's low-income communities will disproportionately be affected by the ill effects of climate change due to increased exposure to extreme weather events, drought, and system vulnerabilities. This vulnerability occurs in the form of energy burden, which is the percent of income spent on housing energy bills. Coquinno County's energy burden is more than 13%, which is the fifth highest in the entire state. With more energy efficiency and electrification offerings, the city's plan offers an important mixture of incentives and programs to address this energy burden. In SWEAP's recent analysis and study comparing the benefits of electric heat pumps and gas furnaces and central AC systems, we were able to determine that electric heat pumps save energy in cities across the Southwest that also have very similar climate zones to the city of Flagstaff. And that's good news for city of Flagstaff residents. We believe this plan promotes the most cost-effective energy options currently available on the market while conserving energy and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. SWEAP welcomes the opportunity to elaborate on our position and our recent analysis with city staff and city council in the future. In conclusion, we urge city council to support the carbon neutrality plan as drafted and move forward with making Flagstaff more resilient to the impacts of climate change. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Potter. I'm not seeing any cues in our chat box. Appreciate the call. And next caller, please.
You can go ahead and speak to council now.
Hi. So in January of last year, hundreds of us showed up in person to ask you to declare climate emergency. But despite doing so, I worry that the city is not actually treating this as an emergency. I think most of us that were there were under the impression that the city Sustainability Section would be instructed to come up with the best plan to achieve the new goals as quickly as possible and that that would be implemented automatically. The fact that it will take 17 months from that meeting before a proposal will even be voted on shows that the climate crisis isn't being treated like a real emergency. If it were, the Sustainability Section would be a department, and enough local residents would be hired to be into it to greatly accelerate the pace they can complete the immense workload they face. Fossil fuel interests are likely to try to delay or derail this proposal through lobbying the Corporation Commission and manipulating business owners into the false belief that this will hurt them. But this proposal already contains compromises and concessions to these interests. It's taken so long to put together because of the exhaustive process of working to address the concerns of the business community and others that are skeptical towards the goal that science tells us must be achieved. And as a result, it only calls for a 44% reduction in emissions with the rest having to be offset. We obviously would have preferred to see the proposal call for much higher reductions and fewer offsets. But again, that's a concession that's already been made to the business community. And we're okay with making it if that means finally getting this process underway. Fossil fuel interests have already been accommodated arguably too much, and we demand that there be no more delays for their sake and based on their flawed economic arguments. They're scaring local businesses into thinking that they will be forced to foot huge overhead costs associated with electrifying buildings. But this proposal only sets the goal of electrifying half of the buildings in the city by 2030. Nobody will be forced to do so, and those that choose to should benefit financially from doing so. The city should put together an advertising campaign that will get businesses and homeowners clamoring to electrify their homes and businesses for the financial benefits. They would if they knew the cost of replacing worn-out gas appliances with electric ones were largely offset by subsidies, and they'd then begin saving lots of money on energy costs or even virtually eliminating energy costs by taking the last step and powering everything with solar panels on their roofs. Fossil fuel interests are also scaring people by claiming that reductions in the industry will put locals out of work. But how many Flagstaffians are actually working in the fossil fuel industry versus how many could we put to work electrifying buildings? How many businesses will be started in order to electrify 12,000 homes and businesses by 2030? How many HVAC techs will they employ to install electric heat pumps? How many plumbers will they employ to install on-demand electric water heaters? How many electricians and installers will they employ to put photovoltaic solar arrays on roofs? How many people could we put to work producing the carbon offsets that will require? Either working with cutting-edge technologies in this nascent industry or through things like programs to preserve our forests? How many people could we put to work managing the forests and greatly reducing the risks of forest fires? This is an emergency. The time to do this has not only come. It was last year, or honestly, years or even decades ago. The voters of Flagstaff are watching and want this proposal to be adopted with no more delays.
Thank you, Mr. Alatore. Next caller, please.
Okay, Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This is Michelle James, Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. FQ appreciates the city's decision to hold this community conversation. Flagstaff must take bold action and adopt the draft carbon neutrality plan. Our city cannot achieve carbon neutrality by 2030 as the city has committed to do unless the council adopts a comprehensive strategy that outlines necessary steps to reach this goal. The draft carbon neutrality plan is that strategy. Reaching our goal by 2030 will require some big shifts for our community, as we heard about already this afternoon. But this is an emergency, and as such, this plan must be adopted in June, as our work needs to start now immediately. The climate emergency is already changing Flagstaff and threatens catastrophic events in and around our mountain town and all over the world. Flagstaff can expect increased wildfire risk, increased drought, increased risk of major flooding and damage to our water supply, among other impacts. Climate change will affect the Flagstaff economy. In the not-too-distant future, we may see forest closures that last for many months. We could see large wildfires that require the closure of miles of recreation trails. These consequences of climate change will affect our cities' ability to attract tourists and will affect our businesses. The cost of inaction is expensive. Urgent action is necessary to take advantage of what scientific experts are calling a small window of time this decade that the world has to avoid the worst effects of irreversible climate change. The Earth is now 1.1 Celsius warmer, degrees Celsius warmer than it was at the start of the Industrial Revolution. The world must limit the warming of our planet to 1.5 degrees Celsius according to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. The importance of this cannot be underestimated. Will this be challenging? Yes, it will. Do we know how to do it? Yes, a great deal is already known about how cities can reduce carbon emissions in their main emission sectors, including buildings, transportation, and energy supply. Technological innovation is increasing, and national support for renewable energy is growing. The framework of action outlined in this plan is designed to evolve as we learn and as additional information and strategies become available. Will adopting this plan change Flagstaff? Yes, of course. It will create a better Flagstaff. Flagstaff will become a resilient, strong, and connected community. A community that understands the local impacts of climate change and thus is able to prepare for them. A community that cares for the most vulnerable who are affected disproportionately by climate change. Flagstaff can have a thriving and diverse local economy where businesses are part of the climate change solution. Our community may begin to move more thoroughly, excuse me, may begin to move to more understanding that we're all connected and our current and future well-being is collective. FQ urges council to adopt the draft carbon neutrality plan, and do so in a timely manner. We can't delay. We cannot deal with extensions or twiddling of thumbs. Now is the time for council to be definitive, exhibit strong leadership, and take immediate action to set Flagstaff on its path to carbon neutrality. FQ looks forward to working with the city to build a strong and resilient Flagstaff. Thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you, Ms. James. Next caller, please.
Mayor, I have Emily Melhorn. Emily, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Thank you. I'm Emily Melhorn, homeowner and Flagstaff manager for the Alphalina Project. The Alphalina Project would like to see further discussion on consumption of the things our community buys. The carbon neutrality plan opened up stated that this consumption is about 19% of our actual energy usage. And there is not yet clear path in the plan on how to reduce that. To be fair, it's very challenging to measure this. However, our concern is the single-use disposal, and particularly plastic. Plastics are made from fossil fuels. They are stripped by fossil fuels. Typically, plastics are used for two months before they are sent to our landfill, releasing rooftop gases for hundreds of years. Our third-largest source of greenhouse gases is the landfill, and that only accounts for the end life cycle. This does not measure the energy intensity of extraction, transportation, refinement, production, and distribution of all the plastics that are used to watch. Still need to be able to measure it to know that there is something carbon neutral about destroying a lifestyle. I call on our city government to give a clean, safe, and healthy in our community. Get rid of single-use plastics in your own city departments. Replace them with renewables, recycled recycled contents, sets in examples. One of our business schools and other social institutions need to see what the barriers are to implementing renewables, whether it is the nickel cop or infrastructure of commercial disc walk stations. These are workable solutions, but do not require arse-dogged, wet, dirt, change. I think the type of pollution presented in the carbon neutrality plan opened up. Quite frankly, they should have been implemented 30 years ago, but they won't. The store community needs to be deeper, it's really risk-harding neutrality. The further you pump some acres down the road, the more sacrifices will need to be made later. The reducing plastic is not a sacrifice. 50% of all plastics ever made were introduced in the 21st century. And thus, it's not that difficult to imagine living with them without them. The children and community will thank you for taking bold action on the big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melhorn. Next caller, please.
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly, you can go ahead and speak now.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this urgent topic today. My name is Megan Kelly, and I'm the Energy Manager for the Grand Canyon Trust. Part of the trust's work consists of looking at greenhouse gas emissions across the Colorado Plateau and identifying ways to bring our region closer to carbon neutrality. I'm asking you today to please support the adoption of the Flagstaff Carbon Neutrality Plan on June 15th as it is scheduled, without changes and without delay. Because as the language of the Flagstaff Climate Emergency Declaration suggests, climate change is an emergency, and it's imperative that it's treated as such. By adopting this plan, the city of Flagstaff has a ripe opportunity to lead by example, can inspire other communities across the Southwest and the country to do the right thing, while doing our part in the global effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to secure the future of the generations that come after us. The Fourth National Climate Assessment highlights the incredible susceptibility of the Southwest to the impacts of climate change. Temperatures in our region are projected to rise along with the number of heat-associated deaths and illnesses. These increased temperatures are significantly impacting the water cycle, resulting in decreased snowpack and stream flow. Water shortages are already occurring in our water-scarce region, while drought and wildfire are increasing. Wildfires are burning more acreage, leading to increased erosion and damage to communities in fire-prone areas like Flagstaff. The cultural resources, culturally significant crops, and traditional foods of indigenous peoples in the region are being affected by all of the above, and all of these impacts are projected to worsen, especially if we don't take aggressive action as a global community to reduce emissions and get climate change under control and fast. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions through this carbon neutrality plan will ultimately lend to the health and safety of our community. We'll be doing what's in our power to have healthier forests and less risk of catastrophic wildfire imposed by a flood, a more secure water supply, cleaner air, and improved public health, and more protection for the region's most vulnerable residents. Adopting the carbon neutrality plan will not only instill an appropriate sense of urgency within our community, but it will unite us as a community under a common cause that will benefit Flagstaff and the rest of the world. I urge you today to please hear this call and to do the right thing by adopting the carbon neutrality plan on June 15th. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next public participant, please.
Mayor, I think we just need a moment to get this one on the line. We had a few people not pick up.
No problem. Give me a second.
Mayor, I do have Robert Brunig on the line. Robert, you can go ahead with your comments.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I just wanted to call and reinforce a number of things that have already been set. The term emergency for the climate emergency that was passed by city council last year means something that is urgent to do, and I couldn't agree more. And I urge you that not to delay implementation of this plan, but to move forward not only to adopt this plan, but then to take all the steps necessary to make sure that the plan is implemented in a timely manner. We cannot delay any longer. We're about 30 years behind. So we need to move on now and get this done in the next 10 years if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunig. Next public participant.
Eli, you can go ahead and speak now.
Thank you. I just want to thank city council for listening to my comments and taking leadership on this important issue. I'm a local business owner and 100% in favor of the proposed climate neutrality plan. Our business has been focused on reducing energy usage in homes since 2012, and the economic boom for the local economy will be substantial if this plan is passed. The plan will create hundreds of good-paying jobs that will be impossible to outsource while reducing energy costs for renters, homeowners, and businesses. There's been some misconceptions about heat pump technology that I did want to address. We also install heat pumps, and the technology has greatly advanced over the last 10 years. And despite some outdated views, they perform well in cold climates like Flagstaff. We install heat pumps that operate all the way down to negative 22 degrees and are comparable in cost to high-efficiency gas furnace. They also can be powered by solar power and will just get cleaner as our power grid gets cleaner as well. Over the last two years, I have transitioned my own 1976 house to reduce my carbon footprint. I've installed solar, a heat pump, and purchased an electric vehicle. My house is now freezing twice the electricity that it is using, and is that carbon negative, including my driving that I do with my electric vehicle. So we have the technology. We have the workforce. We now just need council leadership to put action into words and lead Arizona to a carbon-free future. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. Next public participant.
Okay, Sean, go ahead.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Sean Newell. I'm an independent business owner, and I volunteer with the Citizens Council. I'm an independent business owner and I volunteer with the Citizens Climate Lobby. And I have three points I'd like to make today. First, inaction is not an option. As we've heard, either we start acting strategically on our carbon neutrality goal very soon, or we react and respond to increasingly severe and costly climate impacts over decades to come. I am one hundred percent behind the strategic action proposed in this plan and hope you are too. Second, as we've heard, Flagstaff continues to be a leader in climate action, and we're inspiring others to follow our lead. Ramon told us that those who can act must do so and lead others to action. And we have, we were the first Arizona city to urge Congress to pass a national price on carbon, one that included a dividend to protect our most vulnerable community members and stimulate a clean carbon economy as the fee drives emission reductions. We were also the first in Arizona to declare a climate emergency, and on both actions we led and other Arizona cities followed. This plan is another strong act of climate leadership, and it offers an inspiring roadmap to a low-carbon future that can be replicated by others. My last point is that carbon neutrality is good for both people in business. We've heard this before, but, um, I haven't heard yet, and I was surprised that about this, but research published this year showed that as many as one in ten people worldwide die from complications related to air pollution caused by burning fossil fuels. Um, and this is new research, and it shows that particulate matter is very important, um, and reducing it increases the health of our people. So if we do the work that we need to do, we'll not only clean our air, we will support new businesses and jobs in renewable energy, efficiency, retrofits, and electrification. All of us will benefit by moving to a low-carbon future, and all of us will pay the cost of doing nothing if we do so. So I support the future that this plan leads us to, and I urge you to pass this plan in June so that we can invest in a clean and livable future. And thank talented city staff on a great presentation today and everyone who is involved in generating this solid plan, and I thank each of you for your service to Flagstaff.
Thank you so much. Uh, next public participant.
Mayor, I have Kelly Bingham. Kelly, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Hi, thank you for having me today. Uh, I just wanted to say that I fully support, uh, the carbon neutrality plan. It's really important to me to live in a city that is a leader in climate action. It's also important to me to preserve the beautiful natural environment that we all enjoy in Flagstaff. Not only does it affect our city, but it also affects the surrounding areas in Coconino County and the entire state. So thank you to the staff who made the reports, and especially the staff that worked on the carbon neutrality plan and collecting all the public comments. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Bingham. Uh, next public, public participant, please.
Mayor and Council, I have Joey Bono. Joey, you can speak now.
Mayor and Council, thanks for, uh, taking my comments and questions, and I also want to commend the Sustainability Office for their, uh, great presentation. Um, I'd, I'd like to direct my question to the Sustainability Office presenters, and most particularly about Appendix A, uh, page one oh six. Under, uh, the thirty percent remaining miles electric column, there's a note about electric vehicle car share program. And how will the city fund and operate the EV car share program? Will the EV car share program be operated by a third party? Where will the cars be located? And how will the charging costs be funded? And then I also have an ancillary question for Councilman Baslin, and I'd like to hear how his six mile, his pledge to walk six miles a day is going.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Um, if we could have, uh, Ms. Antonopoulos chime in here on that front, that would be great. Get in the experts here.
Mayor and Council, Nicole Antonopoulos, uh, thank you so much for that question. We have not determined what that framework would, frame, uh, work would look like at this point. Um, we have to identify a funding source, uh, and potential partners. What we do know, though, is that car share, bike share programs have really taken a significant hit during the pandemic. So this is an opportunity for us to take a step back and reevaluate frameworks um, that provide business opportunities, as we've been talking about throughout the presentation. You've heard as well from many of the public comments that provides business opportunities locally as well. So more to come on that.
Thank you, Ms. Antonopoulos, and on to the important matter. How, Councilmember Aslan, how, how are those six miles coming? Have you hit the five hundred miles yet? And walk five hundred more?
Mayor DZ, I, uh, hit one thousand miles on Friday, so that's how that's going.
Awesome. Good man.
Good luck in the walk.
All right. Well, uh, thank you, Mr. Bono. Uh, on to the, uh, next public participant.
Mayor, that was the last public speaker.
Yep, just saw that in the chat box. Uh, thank you, Ms. Fobar and team. Um, so without further ado, I will, let's turn it into discussion amongst council and looking, looking forward to seeing those Cs and Qs in the chat box here. Councilmember McCarthy, just stirred us up.
Oh, not him again. I just want to say that I have read the whole document, every word of it. I did provide, uh, three pages of comments to Ms. An- and Anopoulos. And, um, but, um, I'm very supportive of the plan. I, I think it will need some refinements and some of the goals will be difficult to reach, but we'll never reach them if we don't try. So I am supportive and, uh, I look forward to a formal presentation of this plan, uh, next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Counsel. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, team, for the wonderful presentation. And as a mom of two and as Maddie, who struggles with forest fires and a small business owner, I definitely have a passion for this topic. And let's face it, it's not always going to be easy. Um, I made a decision years ago to put solar on my house, and it was a financial burden, and I realize that I'm very lucky to have been able to do that. It was a tough, um, economic decision for my family, but one that we felt we needed to do. And I am so happy I did it and hope that the Solar Co-op and other opportunities will help other families in Flagstaff get to have the opportunity that I have and have solar on their house. And when I was running for my seat on City Council, I told myself, if I win a seat and if I'm lucky enough to be part of council, I will get an electric bike. Again, I know I'm very fortunate, and I will use that bike to, uh, you know, toodle around town, get to work, use it as my commuter as much as I can. And I really have been shifting my whole way of thinking of transportation from that electric bike. And, uh, I kind of look like a goofball on the road sometimes, but it really has, uh, taken some time to get used to it, but I love it. And as a business owner, I do look at this as an opportunity. It is hard to shift business practices, and I try and work on it every day. And I'm trying to take that proactive approach. And I do believe that in the short and long term, this plan will benefit our business community. I can't have my business open if there are wildfires burning down the city. Um, or if we run out of water. Uh, so I do, you know, I understand the concerns from the businesses. This is a big step, and I just want to remind everyone that we need good faith, good communication, and the understanding that we all need to work together on this as a community and go through this journey together. Um, I do have a couple of questions, and I'm embarrassed that I don't know, but can you talk a little bit about the water usage with solar? And I guess my other question is, what are the specific ways we will keep engaging with our community and our business community throughout the stages of the plan? Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Uh, Ms. Antonopoulos.
Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you for the questions. There has been some discussion, uh, regarding water use and solar, and I did, uh, reach out to some experts in the field. And at this point in time, um, the solar panels do not necessarily require a lot of cleaning. They're tilted in such a manner that would, um, you know, the, the weather is being monitored, but they're tilted in such a manner that they do not necess- necess- necessitate. Wow, we've been talking so much, I can't really form words anymore, but necessitate cleaning. Um, and is that the specific component of the water use that you're looking at?
I guess that, but when we are creating the solar panels, is there a lot of water in the manufacture of the actual panels? I just, I've had a couple of community members ask and kind of comment on the water usage and solar.
Um, I would, I'd be happy to get back to you on the specifics on how much water is actually used in the production of the panel, but for the maintenance of the panel and the operation of the panel, there's very limited water needs. And then your second question, if I have it correctly, is how we are going to continue to engage with the business community. I did highlight that we are going to ask businesses to assist us in developing a business committee to help advise and inform on what type of incentive we need, what type of education businesses need. Can we help facilitate trainings, um, and also help advance programs that and incentives from other agencies? And I'll just use our electric company as one such, um, example. APS has a number of programs that are available, and is that information getting distributed out to our businesses? Well, we can help ensure that we're working with all aspects and facets of business, of the business community to help ensure that they have that information and they have access to programs and incentives that are outside of the city's control. I am, I will mention to you, and, uh, fingers crossed, I don't want to get ahead of anything, but we have put in, um, for some funding and that will, um, if, if approved, um, through Representative O'Halloran's office to create, for example, um, a funding mechanism for deep retrofits in our residential sector. And, you know, we want to reach out to the business community to see what resources are available in our community to help advance that and, um, and so forth. So there's a lot of opportunity for growth and, um, developing a framework for our future and the collaboration with our businesses. And really, you know, as we call ourselves the city of innovation, here's the perfect opportunity to really, um, continue with that theming. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you both. Uh, Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you so much, and, um, thank you, staff, for the great presentation. And thank you, um, to all of our commenters tonight. I took a lot of notes, and thank you to the steering committee who, who brought about this draft. Hundreds of community members have been involved in very substantial ways for years, developing, um, first, the, um, adaptation and action plan, and now, um, this carbon neutrality plan. And I'm very grateful to all of those people who have lent their time and their expertise and to, to the community that rallied and pressed the city into motion regarding, um, climate action. So I am so excited to see this draft report, draft plan, and I too have read it cover to cover, and, um, I'm excited for the opportunities that it presents to our community. I do think that there will be economic development opportunities that we don't even see yet and, um, that, that we can't even conceive of yet. And, um, I'm a firm believer in the climate science, and I'm a firm believer that we have to act now, and the cost of not acting now will be greater than any cost associated with, um, putting in place the infrastructure that we're talking about. I want to assure people, you know, we've, we've received, um, some emails from people who are concerned that we are going to make people do all of these things. And, and hopefully you heard through staff's presentation that there will be incentives, there will be encouragement, there will be opportunities, but your individual lifestyles are not being mandated to change. Um, I think it's all of our hope that once you can observe the benefits of some of these changes, that, um, they are changes that you'll want to incorporate into your everyday lives. And, uh, you know what? I think I've made all of my points that I wanted to make. Um, I just want to voice enthusiastic support for this plan and also support for, um, moving forward right now. Um, as was also stated earlier, this is a framework, and there will be many additional opportunities for ideas and input from all sectors of the community. So, community input and conversations don't stop once we adopt this plan. This is just a beginning. And, um, again, I just want to express my excitement for this beginning and for where this plan can lead us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Salas.
Your dog has been so good.
Did you see me pushing her down?
She's been quiet. That's what matters.
Hi, Lola. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question to Ms. Antonopoulos. Uh, are you aware that, uh, two big business organizations, the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce and the Northern Arizona Leadership Alliance, which is an organization of over forty presidents, CEOs of, uh, uh, major employers in Flagstaff employing over thirty thousand, uh, Flagstaff residents, um, well, are in support of our effort in coming up with a carbon neutrality plan? And they are also con- uh, organizing a business summit toward the end of June with the intention to, to offer recommendations to council after the council's summer break. So is it possible to allow for that business summit to happen and have them recommendations? To have the business buy-in, not only from the big employers who, um, we, we need to take account in terms of their respective corporate sustainable, uh, and, and carbon neutrality plan. I believe some employers like, like Purina, Purina and Gore have their respective sustainability plans that we need to take into account for. I think the plan is very, very ambitious, and we need the community buy-in, especially the business sector, from the small mom-and-pop shop all the way to the big employers. So can we, um, allow the business summit to happen and, and have business recommendations before we consider adopting it?
Mayor and Council, thank you for the question. I think this is an absolutely perfect opportunity to build the Business Advisory Committee. If the summit is bringing all these businesses together, we have this opportunity to gather the data that we've been looking for. As I mentioned in one of the slides, Econa and the Chamber have agreed to issue a survey to help us better understand what businesses are doing in Flagstaff and also what their needs are. How can we help them advance the carbon neutrality plan from, as I mentioned, trainings? Um, what type of incentives would they need? This would be the perfect opportunity to gather that data to later inform, uh, the, the framework. Uh, and I believe we've, we've mentioned throughout the plan And I believe we've, we've mentioned throughout the plan discussion this afternoon that we will be continuously evolving this framework, and we will be continuously coming back to council as we move forward over the next eight years. But as we've heard from community members and as we've discussed the entire time, when the carbon, excuse me, climate emergency declaration came forward to council, that an emergency requires swift action. And my recommendation as a staff person would be that we move forward and incorporate that business summit as one of our first implementation actions to get the information from the business community on how to frame their needs moving forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that response, Ms. Antonopoulos, but I'm coming from a point of view of, of, and I quote staff from your presentation earlier, creative solutions and collaboration, community participation, strong balance, equitable transition, rely on partnerships, and prioritize incentives. I believe it will be pragmatic for, for the city to engage the business and community in such a way they are part of developing the, the plan, not implementing the plan. They, they're part of developing the plan, have the business community weigh in before we adopt the plan, so that we have community buy-in. At the end of the day, the business community, who also own properties in Flagstaff as residents, will, will be impacted by the plan. And, and we all know that this is a costly plan. We, staff has cursorly presented the cost at the budget retreat to the tune of between eighty-eight million to a ninety-two point one million in terms of potential bond measure in November twenty-two. So I believe it is very important to have business input, business, business support before we adopt the plan. So that's, that's my, my recommendation to, to, to council and mayor and staff and have the business buy-in, allow the business summit to happen, have their recommendations before we adopt the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Nicole, Jenny, and DC. Excellent presentation. That was a long presentation, but filled with wonderful, good information. Wow, what a, what a process this has all been. You know, this is, this is making me think back to some of those early open houses leading up to the adoption of the climate action and adaptation plan, which was unanimous and was such an awesome, awesome night at City Hall, one of the highlights of, of my experiences at City Hall prior to getting elected. And, and now, you know, here we are after declaring an emergency, a climate emergency, and, and now we're talking about this draft plan of, of which is extremely ambitious, of which has been brought up, and does have a good amount of question marks around how we're going to fund it, how are we going to do it? And, and there is some, some fear in the community about this, or, or, you know, confusion being circulated to a degree. But I, I really want to thank you all for taking the time to present and address a lot of those points that are being brought up in the community. I especially want to thank the partnership that has occurred with all the agencies, individuals, staff members leading up to this point. This is going to be a transition. This is going to take time. It's going to be uncertain at times, and it's going to be scary. But I have full faith in this community, working together with the council, whatever the council might be at that time, with staff, to figure out the best way to move this plan forward locally. You know, this is a guiding document. And as Vice Mayor mentioned so eloquently, you know, this is not a mandate, nor do we have the ability to manage a lot of these things that are being brought up in the community. But it's, it's, I have full faith in us moving forward with the community at the forefront in, in moving these ideas forward. I really like the points that were brought up about reduction and the focus on action rather than relying on carbon dioxide removal, CDR. I, I do see CDR, carbon dioxide removal, having a, a strong role to play in this and something that we need to scale up, as was pointed out in the document. But anything we can do to really invest in action-focused approaches, I hundred and ten percent support, and that's where my mind is. I think that the document and the plan is going to be empowering to the community as it has been leading up to this point. Nicole and your team are excellent at empowering and working with the diverse members of our community. And I just see no better team in Flagstaff to, to lead this effort moving forward, especially given the complexities and the challenges. I think that the incentive approach works really well, and the partnership with the business community is going to be a key factor, as Councilmember Salas was saying. And, and to that point, you know, I love the integration of a business committee. I think that that's going to be very beneficial, and I think specifically Joe Galley from the Chamber of Commerce for his engagement in this process from, from way back when, right? He's been involved a long time. And so I know that he's been speaking out for business voice and business concerns and is helping to put on the summit, which is, which is wonderful. I, I really appreciate the Equity Advisory Committee that's going to be established. I think that's going to go a long way in making sure that we meet our goals of being equitable in this effort. The, the plan positions us nicely to leveraging funds. And, and this is big, you know, we're not only a leader in the states, but we're a leader in the nation. And with the, with the federal government and the Biden administration looking at sustainability and climate change as a priority, there will be funding opportunities of which this plan and our plan and our staff's efforts and our community's efforts are going to position us well to leverage those funds and our funds to reach goals that we didn't think were reachable on our own. So having a plan in place is very important to doing that. And, and I think in the very near future, we will see the return on investment of seeing this plan through. We don't have time to waste. We're already late. As one of the public commenters said, this is an emergency. And, and things take time at the government level, but I think that staff has been working really hard and as fast as they can while maintaining quality of their work. And I'm really, really pleased with the plan. I, I'm excited to address the emissions in our community and, and how to combat some of those. Again, through the big shift and incentives and trying to adjust our culture and how we engage in our lives. Again, not forcing people to do things that aren't possible, but encouraging folks when possible and incentivizing. There's a whole range of things we can talk about. I'm not going to dive into topics right now, though. And, and as Nicole and others have said, this is a living document, folks. So there are a lot of things that are questionable in terms of like, where is the funding going to come from? We don't know. What are the details? It's not sure. But I think the roadmap makes a lot of sense to me. And with time, we can better clearly see what it is and how it is. We need to address each of these focus points. And things can change. And, and to the community, we need you to remain at the table and engage in this process to make sure that the, the path we choose is best for all. You know, Councilmember Salas, you talked about postponing the adoption past June fifteenth. We were supposed to adopt this plan tonight, and we are postponing that a couple of weeks in order to receive more public comments and allow the community to have a chance to digest this large document and this large plan and, and submit comments and feedback to us and to staff. So to the public, I, I really hope you read the plan or do your best to get through that plan and submit your comments and concerns to us. We got a couple of weeks of, of listening that we're here to do. And then obviously another hearing on this topic at our June fifteenth agenda. I, I'm very excited about that business summit, but I do not want to see us postpone this plan any further. And we can take those recommendations in stride when, when we have them from that business summit, which, which I'm very excited about. One of my bigger comments I want to make in terms of a request, Nicole, to you and your team, and I think you know what, what I'm going to say here, is just if we can run this by some of the Indigenous Commission commissioners, we, we've done that with other documents in the past, a lot of things that the city's been working on in the past. And Rose, our coordinator for Indigenous initiatives, has been very helpful in facilitating that, that communication and getting us feedback on some of the work we're doing. I'd love to see more of an Indigenous viewpoint and holistic approach reflected through the plan. I, I know at this point, I'm not expecting us to go page by page, but I'm thinking, you know, at the beginning, talk about the land, talk about the history, talk about the culture, talk about environment and climate through, through a lens that is different than, than ours, that many of us that are on this call tonight. And then at times throughout the document, around major points, have little sections that show a different perspective or talk about maybe a, a different perspective and the Indigenous perspective. And then maybe something at the end as well. But just some thoughts, if we could do that, that'd be great. I know that Jenny presented this to the Indigenous Commission during their second meeting, so I, I don't believe there was too much feedback, but I, I know there was some. Anyways, great plan, great work team. I think that this is wonderful. I'm very excited about this. I, I really am looking forward to seeing this move forward. But I'm also really looking forward to working out the kinks and working through things with the community and staff and council and leadership. And lastly, I just want to express gratitude to the Climate Emergency Steering Committee. There were a lot of folks on that committee, and I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you, along with the Flagstaff Sustainability Program staff and interns. You all worked tirelessly to get this to this point, and we are close to that finish line. And, and I just want to say thank you. I think you all did a great job, and I am very proud of this document. And Nicole, if you have anything you'd like to add, please do, but that was the end of my comments.
Mayor and Council, I did just drop something into the chat, Councilmember Shimon, and we absolutely plan to have further conversations, not only just with the Indigenous Commission, but various commissions throughout the city organization as well that really want to focus on some specific discussions around equity and moving forward in consideration of social equity and environmental justice.
Great. Do you think it'd be possible to integrate more of the Indigenous philosophy into the plan in terms of like, you know, at the beginning, at the middle, the end, things like that? Or is that kind of something that you already feel like is integrated?
Oh, well, we absolutely, you know, again, as this is an evolving framework, absolutely. As we get more input, we did not want to make any assumptions based on any representation of community members without their specific input and approval. So we have a really great opportunity to continue to grow this.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Aslan.
Good evening, everybody. Very exciting stuff. I am so encouraged and so very moved by what I've seen and heard tonight. What an amazing presentation. Congratulations, Nicole and Jenny and Ramon, and to all of your team members, to everybody who's put so much hard work into this. I might, if I may dare say so, that was pretty kick-ass. It was a really nice mic drop from you guys this evening, and I really appreciate the hard work. You know, a, a lot of, a lot of good science is going in behind this, and a lot of important community involvement and development work is going into this. But we need folks like you at the forefront who are able to articulate why this is important and how it will work and how we are bringing everybody along. And I just can't thank all of you enough for being the experts and for being so adept at what you do. It really moves the ball on this. I hope everybody knows at this point, you know, we, we've been working on this for years. The, the climate adaptation plan pre-existed my time on council, but there are other council members on this council who worked on that. I was very supportive and enthusiastic about those efforts and our decision to transition to, to carbon zero net neutrality by 2030 was something that I was very much enthusiastic about and a champion of. I hope the community understands that I come to this table with a great deal of enthusiasm. As, and I'm so encouraged by what I'm hearing from the rest of council this evening as well. It's really nice to be a part of a team that's moving synergistically in the right direction and where you, you don't feel like you're standing in the breach and shouting from the mountaintops and no one's listening. So it's just so, so encouraging. You know, one thing I'd like to, so I'll, I'll try to keep my comments brief because I, I know the community and the council has heard my thoughts on this over and over and over again as, as these conversations keep coming up. You know, I've, I heard the word ambitious a lot tonight. And I, 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 while I appreciate why that word is being thrown around, I don't, I don't know that I would choose the word ambitious for the, the, the Flagstaff's carbon neutrality plan. You know, when, when the United States entered World War II, I don't think anyone would consider that ambitious. And the work that went into getting our economy up to speed and we came out of it one of the greatest superpowers on the planet, that wasn't about ambition. That all came out of a total sense of crisis and urgency and necessity. And the things that were done to rebuild the American economy and the American community and the world community during that time was just something that needed to be done. And what we were able to do was step up to the plate and deliver. And the carbon neutrality plan for City of Flagstaff is really just stepping up to the plate and delivering what needs to happen. It's not about ambition. This is absolutely critical and crucial and necessary. And we're already very late to the table. I agree that we should move forward with this on June fifteenth. I believe that's the date. We have waited long enough, and there has been so much opportunity for conversation and input in, in the, the ground level floor of this. I like to think of this as a train that's leaving the station, and this thing is in motion. It needs, it needs to be heading down the track, and we're going to go ahead and hit the go button and take off. But you know what's really encouraging, and this was reiterated over and over and over again this evening? This is not a train track with one stop. There's going to be multiple opportunities for folks to get on board. It's a very large train. We want to hear from everybody. And there's going to be ample opportunity for everyone to voice their concerns and to troubleshoot things with us and to cast a vision and to try to head off possible conundrums before they occur. You know, I was very fortunate enough to speak with EKona about this, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. In fact, Gail, Gail Jackson and I went for a three-mile walk one, one afternoon in the forest, and alls we did was talk about the climate adaptation plan and the things, the concerns that she had to bring forward from, from her constituency. And I was very, very happy to listen to her, and I hope that she felt heard, and I believe that she did feel heard. And the same with the Chamber of Commerce and Joe Galley and, and Julie Pastrick. I hope that you guys were able, were, felt heard by me. I want to be a good listener in this process, and I absolutely believe what, what Councilmember Salas has said, which is we, for this to be successful, we need the buy-in and the encouragement of the business community. Everybody needs to feel empowered as part of this process, or we won't be successful. I think it's, it's time for us to start walking down the road. Councilmember Shimon mentioned that we've already delayed voting on this, and I don't think we should delay any further. It was, it was interesting to me that we delayed tonight's vote so that we could have a community conversation and get more input. And this was asked for by the business community. Yet I didn't hear anybody, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't hear anybody from the public commenters speak about slowing down on this or the need for greater deliberation. You know, I, I'm not going to read too much into that. It, it, you start playing a dangerous game when you count who's commenting and who's not. The point here is it, it would have been nice to have heard some voices of dissent if there are voices of dissent out there. This platform, this space, this Tuesday night was given over to a conversation. And I don't know what those concerns are, except that people are saying there are concerns. And I don't know what those concerns are, except that people are saying there are concerns. And to me, that tells me that there's a desire to just not move forward in good faith. And I think what we need to do is go ahead and get this train moving down the tracks. And there's going to be ample room and opportunity for all those conversations that need to happen. And I really do hope that this business roundtable that's being developed for the summer is able to give us that greater totality of information of where these concerns are coming from. And hopefully, we can dispel some of the spurious concerns that are out there, and we can lift up some, some true flags that we need to address in order to proceed, so that we're all on board. And I, I think we can do that. Over and over again, we heard that this is a living document and an evolving framework. And I really hope that the business community understands and hears that I want to listen to you, and I want to hear what you have to say. And I'm looking forward to those conversations. And I'm not afraid to tackle any of the sticky points that need to come out of this. But the science is very clear. We're late to the game on this, and we need to move forward. And it is going to be one of the greatest privileges and honors of my life to be able to vote on this on June 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Well, to wrap it up here on council, I am in strong support of the carbon neutrality plan. You know, as the callers have said, as we recognized last year, council did, this is an emergency, and we must act like it. But more than that, it is an opportunity. This is an opportunity to innovate. This is an opportunity to be leaders. This is an opportunity to provide workforce development and a different way to diversify our economy. By moving forward with this and being leaders in this means we have greater access to grant opportunities, to get that outside funding, outside investments from the federal government, from the private sector, from the nonprofits that are coming out to see this through with big dollars in pocket. We can't sit on our hands, and those municipalities that do, well, they'll be down on the list of grant applicants to receive those outside funds that I want to see coming into this community. Now, these ideas and plans have been developed over many years with hundreds, if not thousands, of people in our community. And I really appreciate the community's efforts, more than appreciate their efforts, especially in the last year in light of the pandemic, to continue to be able to see this through and input and create what we are here discussing today. And I look forward to seeing continued input from our community as this plan is further developed and more importantly, implement it where the rubber meets the road. So with that, I just want to thank our sustainability team and all the efforts that went into this. You're nothing if not thorough. And I just am in support and looking forward to the continued conversations. So, thank you, council. Do we have any other? I'm not seeing any further comments or questions on this. Just checking here real quick. All right. Well, with that, I think it'd be nice to have just a little breather before we jump into COVID talk. So let's take a short break, 11-minute break. Let's come back here at 6:20 to, yeah, discuss the COVID and face mask proclamation or face covering proclamation and all that bit. So I will see you then.
We are streaming.
Excellent. We are now down to agenda item number, I'll play it here, seven, the discussion of the potential rescinding of the face covering proclamation and the use of city fields. Deputy City Manager, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor DC. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Shannon Anderson. I am one of the deputy city managers, and will be providing a brief presentation to set the stage for council's discussion on the potential rescinding of the face covering proclamation and use of city fields. We will review the community transmission level, monitoring criteria in the city's reentry plan, the growing vaccination rates here in Coconino County, and an update from the CDC for those who are fully vaccinated. These topics will support council's discussion about the face covering proclamation. Then I'll provide a brief summary about the city's guidelines for field permits. The potential rescinding of face covering is supported by the community transmission level here in Coconino County, which is moderate, and the community saw another decrease in all three benchmarks. These, the case incident rate remains moderate, while the percent positivity and percent of COVID-like illnesses remain in the minimal category. The city's monitoring criteria has been met with a downward trajectory for four weeks or more for the number of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. Although we may have experienced a grace period in the numbers, the downward trajectory has continued. Individuals have demonstrated the ability to follow CDC guidelines. FMC is able to care for the seriously ill with a bed capacity, and Coconino County Health and Human Services are able to provide the testing, the monitoring, and the contact tracing as well. The number of Coconino County residents vaccinated continues to grow each week. The latest percentage is now 48.6%, as you see here on this slide. The CDC updated their guidelines for fully vaccinated individuals on May 13th. You will see the same chart we reviewed during our last discussion. However, this version shows no masks are required for those that are fully vaccinated on the right-hand side of this chart. They also recommend that you no longer need to wear a mask or physically distance unless required by the local law. Important to note, masks are still required on public transportation when in healthcare centers, as well as jail and detention facilities. For more information, folks can visit the link that's provided in the presentation. Moving on to the use of city fields. As a reminder, field permits began on April 1st with an allowance of 100 individuals per field with a return-to-play guidelines and adherence to those guidelines. This requirement only applies to city fields. Private organizations and tournament or league directors may choose to follow something different. The CDC does not appear to have updated the recommendations for youth sports, so I've included those here again as a reminder. The only thing that they've noted on that page is again, a reminder about the fully vaccinated changes. This is the background staff had for city council on these two topics. Here are some potential options for council to consider relating to the face covering proclamation and use of city fields. You'll see on the face covering proclamation, three options. One, to keep the face covering proclamation as is. Another, to rescind effective June 1st. The state was chosen because Coconino County was considering the same effective date in order to give a period of transition. And then option three, what again, to be rescind on a different effective date. The use of city fields, that we could continue with 100 individuals per field with the CDC guidelines, or we can choose to do no limitations on the number of individuals, again with the CDC guidelines. So those are the options that we have for you. Certainly, if council chooses a different option, that's perfectly fine. But we would love to get your input as to how you would like to proceed.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Yeah, and I just want to mention that although it is not, it is the authority of the mayor, and City Council does not have a legal say to rescind the face covering proclamation, I asked City Manager to place this on tonight's agenda because I felt important to include council in the conversation and receive your input in a public manner rather than to act unilaterally, as well as provide a forum for the public to comment. So I look forward to hearing your input, council, on what you would like to see on both of these fronts. Councilmember Aslan.
Okay, I'll get us started. We all know what Councilmember Shimoni's going to say. So I'll go ahead and talk. I, I don't know if people really believed me when I struggled previously with the keeping current restrictions in place, because I know how difficult that is. I, you know, I also heard people talking about how we're acting out of fear and different things like this. And for me, it was always about Center for Disease Control recommendations and guidelines. I'm, you know, they're not the perfect thing to follow, perhaps, but they are at least a consistent thing that can be followed. And I have hitched my wagon to the CDC guidelines when it was inconvenient for me to do so, and I am continuing to hitch my wagon to the CDC guidelines now that they have changed their recommendations, and this has upset certain members of the public. I am perfectly bullish and happy about where we're at as a community and very excited to be able to say so. And I see no problem, given the latest and greatest information we have at our disposal, vis a vis the science coming out of the Center for Disease Control, that we can't fully open up and do away with our mask mandate. Now, I would certainly encourage people to continue wearing masks, especially indoors, and especially if you're not vaccinated. You need to go get vaccinated, and if you're not vaccinated, you need to be wearing a mask. It's a public safety issue. But that is something that individuals at this point are going to have to keep track of themselves. I no longer think it is appropriate or necessary for the City of Flagstaff to mandate these public safety measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. And just to clarify, you're also for then, option two for the city fields?
Yeah, I think so. I would like to hear a bit more of how the conversation goes with council on that. I intentionally did not weigh in on that because I honestly, I'll just be totally transparent with you. I don't know what the CDC says about the density of outdoor spaces when you're in mixed company where there might be people who are vaccinated and unvaccinated. I know that it's safe for vaccinated people to be in those situations. So I'm just waiting to see where, where other folks are at.
Sounds good. I just wanted to make sure we're properly, yeah, getting what you're laying down. Councilmember Shimoni, comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilboard Aslan, for getting us going. I, you know, I'm curious to hear what council's discussion, how that plays out on the face covering proclamation. I don't know if I have a strong opinion on that one. So I'm kind of looking to all of you for your guidance and recommendation. I'm not too sure exactly what the pros and cons are of us rescinding that sooner than later, but if it is appropriate, I do think that it might be appropriate to rescind it. But moving on to the city fields, I've heard from folks who have been in attendance at this recent tournament that was had, the girls' soccer tournament that occurred last weekend, that 100 individuals per field worked, but was still difficult because certain family members were asked to be left behind or stay home. And, and so I'd like to see this removed that limitation. And then the other comment I heard about from that tournament was that face masks were being required on, on the field, meaning like, if you're, if you're witnessing the game, you had to wear a face mask, and regulating that and enforcing that was very difficult. So I guess that was what staff was asking of the organizers to do. And so if that is the case, I think that we shouldn't be requiring organizers of tournaments and activities like sporting activities to require mask-wearing outside amongst the audience. So, or council, so if you can weigh in on that point, too, I would appreciate it because I think that there might be political will to adjust that requirement so that A, there's no limitation, and B, masks aren't being required to be worn by active, what's the word? Folks who are in attendance there to cheer on their friend or their child, or whoever it might be. Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, that gives you clear recommendation from myself.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, Mayor. I am in support of option two for both of these items. And just put in another plug for vaccination to the public. And if you are not vaccinated, to ask you to please wear a mask because there are those around you who can't be vaccinated for various reasons. And it is a public health issue, but I'm comfortable with option two in, on both accounts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Salas.
Mr. Mayor. I'm doing this. Double peace sign and also meaning I am fully vaccinated. Also meaning calling and encouraging our residents who have not been vaccinated yet to please consider vaccinating. And with over 48% of our community being vaccinated and with the county rescinding the face covering proclamation, I am comfortable in moving forward with option two. And thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to weigh in. With respect to the city field, I am comfortable with moving with the same call of being fully vaxxed. Please consider option two. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. I was, I was thinking I was going to get the heart hands, but I got the double peace sign. So I'm feeling pretty cool right now. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I am in favor of option two on both, and I wanted to weigh in on Councilmember Shimoni's question on the face covering proclamation. So there's been a lot of confusion with businesses, at least downtown where my business is at, on where we're at with this. And I think it's becoming very difficult for businesses to mandate or monitor the face coverings, because a lot of, now we're kind of like half and half. And so like for, for my business, I gave out a very large amount of free disposable masks because now people are walking around with, with no mask at all. And I've had a lot of businesses reach out to me saying that they're having a lot of confrontation because people are coming into town, they don't know our, our policies. So I do, if you are not vaccinated and can get vaccinated, please do. And I really appreciate Councilmember Daggett's comment that, you know, there are people out there that cannot get vaccinated. So it is a public safety issue or public health issue, but it is becoming very difficult downtown, and I'm sure all around the city with just some confusion on this. So I am ready for option two on both. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you. I'll start with the use of city fields. I'm very comfortable with option two immediately. And the reason I say that is that anyone that goes to one of these events is there voluntarily. No one's forcing them. They don't have to go there. So I feel very comfortable with that. On face covering proclamation, at the top of the page here, I'd probably, this is a little bit different situation. Some people, including people that are under 12 years old, can't get vaccinated, and yet they have to live their life. So if they can't get vaccinated, if they're around people that don't wear masks, they could get contaminated. On the other hand, they can, they can continue to wear masks if they decide to. So I would probably feel more comfortable with something like July 1st. But I'm not going to object if we go with option two there also. I'm not totally comfortable with it, but I'm not going to make a stink about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Aslan has a question?
Yeah, my question is, is why June 1st as an effective date? Is that more a logistical thing, that it's going to take a little bit of time to get the word out? Or is that a totally arbitrary choice? What was the reasoning behind that? And I will tell you that behind my question is, the thinking is that, why, why wait that long?
Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor DC. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor DC. Councilmember Aslan picked June first because that was the date that the County Board of Supervisors was considering this morning. And chose to move forward. It was just to give a period of transition, I believe. It's a change, and so we want to give people a little bit of time to get used to it.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I do remember you saying that. And I do think it probably makes the most sense to be in coordination with the county a little bit on this, just to avoid that extra confusion that is being described.
Thank you.
And I am okay with option two on use of city fields.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, for a thoughtful discussion. I'll add to Shannon's response. June first is also a date that could stick out in some people's minds because we will be reopening the Aquaplex and. The main library with limited hours of operation and some capacity constraints, perhaps, details to follow. But I think in the interest of not having too many dates out there, I also agree June first probably makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilman McCarthy had a question. Could you, yeah, say that aloud rather than just in chat box?
So my question is, did the county make a decision at their meeting today?
I believe that they did. Sorry, I'm just trying to get ahold of the press release, Councilmember McCarthy. Heidi Hansen has indicated that she saw one. Heidi, do you recall what it said? I haven't seen it yet.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
I would have to pull it up, but I do recall that they had made it, so I will, I'll have to get it in front of me, Shannon.
Okay, thanks, Heidi.
Hi, Shannon. This is Jessica Drum, Public Affairs Director. I was also searching for that release and I just pulled it up and will forward it to all of mayor and council. They decided effective June first at their meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. It took three of you, but we got it.
Sorry about that.
No, no apologies.
Mr. Fensel, you have a comment?
I was just going to answer the question, Mayor, and Jessica beat me to it. Thanks.
Alrighty. Councilmember Shimonie has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, can staff just confirm that we are requiring masks to be worn by observers at fields?
So Councilmember Shimonie, currently they would be required to wear a mask on the field because of our mask ordinance. Our proclamation, excuse me. That does apply to city facilities, city properties for sure. And then we have encouraged again, folks to continue to wear masks. That is why this evening we have before you the discussion on, do you want to rescind that face covering proclamation? Because that would effectively address that concern that was shared with you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then June first works for me, Mayor. I would like to see us rescind the mask requirement at field events sooner than that. I don't know if there's political will to do that. I know there's a big boys' tournament coming up this weekend, but that's just my two cents. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I will say that there's been a dramatic shift since the CDC guidelines came out in all outside areas that I've been at. I mean, on the fields, few and far between when I was out with my son for his games over the weekend. We're seeing it at grocery stores, outdoor areas, everywhere. Since that CDC guidelines, it has probably dropped by two-thirds the number of folks who are wearing masks. Oh, sorry, Ms. Sayers, did you have a comment regarding the masks on the fields?
Good, Mayor. Thank you very much. Shannon answered the question.
Excellent. Councilmember McCarthy.
I too would be comfortable saying that no masks are required at city fields, in other words, outdoors. And doing that immediately. I'm comfortable with that.
All right. Well, thank you all for your input. Me, you know, Coconino County has continued to see a decrease in COVID. COVID cases and hospitalizations with just twenty-eight new cases last week. With vaccines widely available at this point on a walk-in basis, no appointment required. And with the recent CDC guidelines stating those who are vaccinated can participate at non-crowded events safely without face coverings. And as of today, forty-eight point six percent of Coconino County residents have been vaccinated. Which is on top of the twelve percent roughly of the populations who've contracted the illness over the last year. The majority of our county has been immunized. The City of Flagstaff has worked hard to follow the science and the recommendations of public health officials throughout the pandemic. Including the CDC and our local health departments, and I want to thank all of members of council and all of our city staff for following the science. After consultation with municipal elected leaders and local experts. I will be rescinding the face covering proclamation effective tomorrow, May twenty-sixth. Please note though, for the public, that face coverings are still required in city facilities for now. And that city council will discuss this requirement next week at the June first council meeting. As the proclamation is rescinded, I wanted to dearly thank all of our healthcare workers. And all essential workers who continued to make life possible and helped our city through such an unprecedented time. We can't thank you enough. And I hope we all recognize and remember all of our essential workers' contributions to society, how they stepped up during the hardest times of the pandemic. Councilmember McCarthy, you have a question?
Yes. A question for you, Mayor. Did I just hear you say you're going to get rid of the face covering proclamation effective tomorrow?
Correct.
And that's interesting because we just had a discussion and I didn't hear anyone say they thought it should be done. What is the date tomorrow?
May twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so the discussion at council was we would do this on June first. So you're gonna ignore that recommendation and do it tomorrow instead? Not that a few days would make much difference, but I'm kind of find it curious that we had that discussion and then you decided to do something different.
Well, I wanted to hear your input for sure, but the fact is, is that by June, people hear June first, they're already pulling off their masks. CDC guidelines since then has dropped dramatically everywhere. It's caused troubles for a lot of our business owners. There's a lot of confusion on the fields when I've been out there. And it causes a lot of issues for the referees, for example, who, you know, they could be seventeen years old and having to. Attempt to deal with that situation, and it's just gonna be worse if we're trying to do any enforcement between now and then if the plan was June first in the first place. So effectively, June first or tomorrow, it would have the same reaction from the public. So I think that we can pull the Band-Aid off here with that. City Manager Clifton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I don't want to truncate this discussion if there are more comments to be had by council. I thought at some point I would attempt to summarize the outcomes. And I can do that now, and if further discussion ensues, that's fine. What I hear, first on the face mask, that's pretty clear. Proclamation will be rescinded tomorrow. Thank you for that. And then with respect to the second talking point tonight, and that concerns the outdoor field capacity. Are we, my takeaway from tonight's discussion is that on June first. That that capacity will be lifted. So we have two things in play. Rescinding the proclamation tomorrow or immediately, and then the capacity at the fields on June first. And I see that Shannon has a comment, so she might be correcting what I just said. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, City Manager Clifton, I did hear that we were gonna continue to keep masks required inside city facilities. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, you did, and I heard the same thing, and I took note, and thank you for that elaboration. We will continue in city facilities, and that we're talking City Hall, Aquaplex, Library as of June first, City Hall immediately. Or ongoing, actually, we will continue to require masks to be worn inside. I take note, as we all do, that some businesses are continuing to do that as well. So while the proclamation is being lifted, individual businesses, and in this case, the city can still require masks within the facilities.
And then the no limitations, would that be immediately or June first?
The limitation.
On the fields?
My takeaway, and that's why I attempted to summarize, Shannon, I still have June first. But if there's more discussion to be had on that, we're anxious to hear, but that's what I took away thus far. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And my takeaway is that, well, I'll have other members of council chime in. But I think that the fields can be opened up immediately rather than waiting till that date. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager, for weighing in. Yeah, Mayor, that's my recommendation too, is that we remove that limitation immediately. That boys' soccer tournament is this weekend, so that would happen before June first. And I think it's time. That's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
I also agree that we could lift any restrictions on our fields as of tomorrow.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I support. The immediate rescinding of the proclamation with respect to face covering. And also opening up the fields tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilmembers Salas. Councilmember McCarthy?
I guess I'm really, I'm getting old, so maybe I'm easily confused. So, Mr. Mayor, you said you're gonna tomorrow release, make a change. Was that to just affect what's going on in the fields? Or was that to affect face masks for indoor issues?
That would be rescinding the face mask or face covering proclamation specifically.
Which would mean, which would mean that if that happens, then face masks would not be required inside city buildings. Is that correct?
That can be an administrative decision, and then we're also gonna be reviewing that on, at the next council meeting to get the full input from council on the indoor setting.
So would you please try to make it very clear, would you please try to make it very clear to me what you're gonna do tomorrow? You're gonna change the rules for face masks for what conditions? Indoors, outdoors? What are you gonna do tomorrow?
It is the actual emergency declaration, the face covering proclamation that was put into place last, what, end of April? That was, that document is.
And what is the effect of that? If that document is gone, then there is no longer a requirement to wear a face mask indoors in city facilities. Is that true?
Maybe if City Manager, if you wanted to follow up with this, given within city facilities, how that works out?
Yes, thank you. And no doubt, there's gonna be confusion on this. There's no way to simplify what is and has been from the outset, a very complicated. Program here. So. The takeaway now is, just to go back to the other items. I am hearing now there is a majority of council that has weighed in to open the fields immediately. And the mayor's proclamation will be, on the face mask, will be rescinded immediately. So those two things are now in play. And then the lingering question Councilmember McCarthy has advanced is, what's the effect on face masks indoors? And just to restate what we mentioned a short while ago, individual businesses can still require masks. It will not be mandated by the city. It will not be enforced by the city. It will be an individual business decision. And I think it's entirely conceivable that some businesses will continue to require masks indoors. They will do that at their own prerogative. With respect to city facilities, we will be doing the same thing. The mayor noted that it's an administrative decision, and I would echo that. I will be waiting for council's further direction, and we can queue this up for a meeting in the near term. I will be looking for direction to lift that. Now, I just want to remind council, we are in phase three of the reentry. Phase three does not equate with. Business back to normal pre-COVID. That's phase four. And it's likely that phase four is gonna be out there on the horizon. And won't be an immediate request by council, by staff to council. So with phase three in mind. You know, with respect to facilities, limited hours, still some spacing requirements, still some constraints as to access. Within the buildings and so forth. And it's conceivable that those things will linger for some time. I mentioned that because it's entirely consistent with that premise to then also require face masks to be worn in city facilities. In other words, you know, as long as we're in phase three, maybe that's a consideration to be had. But again, we'll be looking for council's direction on that. But again, a reminder, you know, phase three does mean we're still in COVID, which we are, that the numbers are all heading in the right direction. And that's very, very encouraging. We're all elated about that. But we're not out of COVID yet, and so some precautions will continue to be taken. Until I hear differently from council, we will require face masks to be worn within city facilities. Now, if there are those with hardships or reasons not to wear face masks, we have protocol in place to accommodate those folks. We can meet outside. We can meet on virtually as we've been doing. We have so many different ways of doing things now to where, if they're, you know, we're not gonna turn business away because somebody's not donning a face mask. We will find another way to conduct that business that's respectful of both individuals involved. But we will continue to require the masks in city facilities until directed otherwise by the council. I hope that clarifies.
So my takeaway from all that is that the mayor lifting the face mask proclamation. And the decision to have face masks requirements in city facilities are unrelated issues. They're separate issues, which I didn't understand that at first.
I do believe. They're standalone issues. I would have to say that they probably are related, but I think we are on good footing to continue to require masks in city facilities. Just as we are requiring social distancing and restricted hours and a number of other things. I am hopeful that we can continue to operate with those greatly lessened restrictions in place for some time. Because again, phase four of reentry is out there at some juncture, we're going to revisit that. And phase four is, there are no restrictions. It is back to pre-COVID conditions. Let me illustrate with one more example. We don't think we're ready to occupy the council chambers. Now, we have some improvements happening there, audio, video, and so forth. And we have. Assumed that that discussion will occur with actual in-person occupation of council chambers, probably occurring after the council break. So we're talking mid to late August when that happens. That may very well presuppose that we're at phase four. We'll certainly have more data then to help inform that discussion. So we're in phase three, which means some restrictions will continue to apply. And along with that line of thinking, we will continue to require masks inside of city facilities. We will wait for council's direction to change that.
Well, one more point of clarification. I thought we just had a discussion where the council agreed to option two, which, if I remember correctly, said no more face masks. So how is? So how is that different than a discussion we might have in the future? We rescind face covering proclamation effective June first. So you're saying that's the proclamation, but our policy could be something completely different than the proclamation. Okay, whatever.
It's policy, perhaps. It's also administration of the interior city facilities. And, you know, I'm going to turn it around a bit and suggest that it would not make a lot of sense to continue to operate with restricted hours and spacing requirements while not asking our visitors and guests and employees to wear face masks inside. I think they are all related and entirely consistent with our phase three of the reentry plan. So now, I haven't spoken to the employees on this. This is all new as of tonight. So I'm kind of going out on a limb here, but I sense from all the discussions that have occurred on this topic that our employees are going to feel a little bit safer and a little bit more secure and very justified in wanting to see face masks worn inside the city facilities. I stand to be corrected on that, but that's just my strong assumption.
All right, my final comment, and then I'll shut up, is that the way we just discussed this was absolutely not clear when we were discussing option one, two, and three fifteen minutes ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, and thank you for bringing that up. It's an important point of clarification. And inevitably, it's a matter now that business owners and owners of buildings, property owners have the right to still require masks on their property. They have the right to refuse service, and if you are told to leave a facility, then it is it is trespassing. So this puts it into the hands of those who are in charge of those facilities, whether it's a business owner or city manager for our own public facilities. And I'll go down on this here. Councilmember Aslan?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say pretty much the same thing, just to help clarify things for Councilmember McCarthy. I understand your confusion, and thank you for pushing back a little bit, actually. But I think what we're dealing with here is an overarching proclamation for the entire city that mandates a certain set of behaviors versus kicking it down a notch to making those decisions the purview of individual business owners or property owners, or in this case, the city. And I think there is reason for the city to maintain a mask mandate for a little while, and that is because we're only fifty percent vaccinated or sixty-two percent immune. So we are assuming a certain amount of risk for our city employees indoors in just allowing nobody to wear a mask. So for the time being, that is one thing that we can control, and it's within our purview, and it's I think it's, I do, I do see the difference there. What we're doing is maintaining the safety of our employees by assuring that they at least have fifty percent coverage in terms of the possibility of someone with COVID spreading it indoors. I think that's where we're at, and that may change soon, too, but it is, it's not unrelated, but it is standalone, for sure.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I support the fields opening up immediately, and the both questions immediately is good. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. All right, I'm not seeing anything else in the chat box. So that wraps that area up, and we're down to agenda item number eight. Is there any public participation, Ms. Bobar? All right, well, then we're down to our information items, two from Mayor, Council, and City Manager, and future agenda item requests. Go down the list here. Vice Mayor Daggett, have anything for us?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad you went in this order because this is kind of relevant to what we're already discussing. I would like to see some sort of conversation as soon as possible around incentives for vaccinations. So what can the city do short of, you know, a million dollar lottery to further incentivize folks to get vaccinated? And what's within our power? And I would encourage us to be creative and think outside the box. And I don't know if this is something that the city wants to bandy about and come up with some recommendations, and then we we choose amongst them, or if we just have a free-for-all brainstorming session at some point, the former is probably more appropriate. It'd be nice to use the city apparatus to further encourage higher vaccination rates. And I'd like to see what's within our wheelhouse and what we can achieve on that front. And also, obviously, what's legal within the state of Arizona in accomplishing that. And this is a time-sensitive matter. So I'll let you figure that all out, Greg.
I'll let City Manager chime in, and Mr. Fensel, please cut us off if we are not abiding strictly by the rulebook here, but City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Aslan, for that. There has been discussion on point with your comment slash question. What has happened, or is happening, Shannon, I think can speak more currently on this topic. With partnership with the county, there's been talk about some pop-up vaccination facilities in proximity to city housing facilities and other strategic locations to try to make it very easy. I'll let Shannon elaborate, and before you do on that, Shannon, because I think council would be quite interested in this, so thank you. On the incentive question, there's also been discussion, and we're talking about doing some things internally with our employees to incentivize being vaccinated. It will not be an expensive endeavor. What has been suggested is things like, you know, some time off, perhaps half a day or a day off, or something that we can manage. I do or want to mention to the last part of your question, Councilmember Aslan, what can we do legally? I would invite the attorneys to speak to that, and perhaps our government affairs officer, because I do understand that there, at least I've read recently that there was some discussion at the state level about preemption on that regard, but I'm very, very hazy on that topic. Others probably know more than I do. And I don't know if Sarah Langley is with us. We can hear from Shannon on the Big Shot incentive program, and Sarah Langley, as a government affairs analyst, if you have anything to share on the statewide legislation, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I'm a little, since this is the to and from session, I think we're kind of going a little too deep into this procedurally. So maybe if we could just get that information sent to us rather to see what's actually going on there, as well as maybe, oh, look at that. So that way, yeah, we could start, yeah, see, seeing how this goes, but.
So, yeah, I didn't want to get a whole discussion started. I just wanted to maybe find a place to agendize this topic of conversation with some ideas queued up that we could choose amongst that are legally feasible. Maybe next week during the mask conversation. I imagine that's going to be short based off of our conversation tonight. Just trying to think strategically and nimbly about what we can do to up our vaccination rates, including things like a lottery or other other methodologies that are showing some success around the country. And I agree, I don't think we should get into a back and forth about it tonight, but would love to have that agendized as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do you have anything else for this evening?
That's it. Thank you.
All righty. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just might mention that I took a tour of Sharon's Manor and their new facilities, the new additions this last week. I was very impressed with the facilities, but even more so, I learned about some of the programs they help, they have to help homeless survivors of domestic violence and also their children. So a very good program. That was definitely worth my time. I guess that's it for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an item. I understand that that of the current City Council policy and ordinance with respect to commemorative flags. And and our existing policy states that the City Council may display on a temporary poll, one commemorative flag per month, but in no event would they display more than two commemorative flags per month to be displayed separately. The first commemorative flag for the first half of the month and the second commemorative flag for the second half of the month. Authorization by the City Council to display commemorative flags under such a policy may occur in one annual resolution only of the council to be considered and potentially adopted in December of each year as an expression of the city's official statements, which we did. But reviewing the council-approved commemorative flags as of December fifteen, twenty twenty, there's no flag listed for the month of August and July. With that stated, I request a fair item to be put in the agenda to review the current flag schedule. And I further, and identify a flag for July and August. And I also further request to consider flying the flag of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, at least for the first half of August, because August seventh is National Purple Heart Day, where we recognize, where we recognize and acknowledge the members of brave military members who made sacrifices. And I humbly ask Mayor, Mayor DC, to please issue a proclamation recognizing Purple Heart Day on August seventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis, and I'd be honored to. Then Councilmember Shumoni?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I actually have nothing to add tonight. Good meeting, and well done, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing tonight. Thank you all.
All righty. Well, I wanted to let everyone know about a great meeting that Councilmember Aslan, Councilmember McCarthy, and I self had, as well as Rose Tohe with Navajo Nation Delegate Thomas Walker. I had a great introduction telephonically, telephone meeting, and regarding several issues of possible collaboration. And we let them know a little bit about what we're doing here in terms of our alternate response system and the reason for our dedication to this model, and leading to the possibility that maybe down the road, we can work together regarding the care center in the near future. We all just discussed, you know, the real need for culturally compassionate approach to addressing a lot of these issues would help many in our community heal. And I also want to give a shout out to Councilmember Aslan, who really hit it home regarding our collaboration regarding dark skies and coordinating for a regional approach to protect our night skies, not just for the city, but a much broader regional approach. I think that was extremely well received. And I look forward to meeting more of our elected leaders in our neighboring tribal communities, and including all members of council to participate. So I'm looking forward to that. And then lastly, I have a little request to council. Something I don't believe should be codified or anything necessarily, but every week I'm asking council members to post their upcoming calendar on your main bio page on the city website, and the same way I've done as my tenured mayor. Every Friday, post meetings for the next week so that we can all be transparent and accountable to the public and to each other. I believe we all should be holding ourselves to similar levels of transparency and accountability, and that we should hold every member of council to the same standards, not just a single member or a few members. So with that in mind, I'm requesting that you provide that information to the public, and that our calendars are all easily available for people to see what we're doing and who we're meeting with, et cetera. So with that, I do, oh, City Manager, do you have anything for tonight?
I do not, Mr. Mayor. I'm busy typing notes and just listening closely, so thank you so much.
Excellent. All right. Well, without further ado, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.